Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record, this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media and is also being recorded by the town via Zoom. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if my colleagues could remain standing and join me in a brief moment of silence for two of our, we lost two dear people in North Reading, John Fariello and Dave Hanlon. If we could just do a quick moment of silence in remembrance, in remembrance of them. Thank you. I know Mr. O'Leary knew Mr. Hanlon pretty well. I don't know if he had anything you'd want to...
Dave Hanlon was a, was head of Department of Public Works for a number of years here in North Reading. I think he left around 2009. He was here for probably about a 10 years. But I can honestly say in all the years that I've served, he is one of the finest employees that we've ever had here. He was a presence in the room. He was witty, he was smart, he was very loyal to his staff, but extremely well respected within Town Hall, within Town Government, and especially from members of the Board who have served with him at the time. I can honestly say that if he wanted to be Town Administrator, he could have been. We had a vacancy at about the time he was retiring and the majority of the Board at the time was more than willing to offer the position to him. He had filled, backfilled the position as a temporary Town Administrator Assistant over the years that he was here because he was extremely capable, extremely knowledgeable, and just so smart. And just, he knew how to handle us, which is not always easy. And I tell you, he was just very well respected and respectful at the same time. So, again, well revered and it's unfortunate he passed too soon. And his presence here, I'm telling you, was still reaping the benefits of his service. You know, and as far as John Fariello, again, longtime member of the community, 40-plus years. Obviously, you know, came in here, signed the warrants for us and witnessed our signatures for a number of years as a constable. But more than that, he also served on a lot of local civic boards and volunteers committees, most notably NORCAM. He was a member of the Board of Directors for NORCAM. So for those of you that are at home and enjoying this rather than the Bruins, you can thank John Fariello for his advocacy because he was a strong advocate for us making sure that when we negotiated contracts with Verizon and Comcast and even those before them, predecessors to them, that there was enough revenue to ensure that we were able to broadcast and get it into everybody's home. So, John's family, you know, our condolences and appreciation for his service. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, appreciate your saying these kind words and remembrance. And we just, on behalf of the Board, give our condolences and our thoughts and prayers to the families, to their families. And our, so we'll proceed on. And our next order of business is public comment. If you want to step forward. If you wouldn't mind, you can sit at the table, too, if you're more comfortable. And just, just talk into the mic so anyone that's joining us. And if you just could state your name for the record, please.
Certainly, good evening. My name is... Sorry. Okay, yeah, sorry. My name is Adam Austin. I live at 42 Main Street. When I saw, when I reviewed the agenda for this evening's meeting, I was surprised and disappointed to see that the list of committees for which you'll be making appointments and reappointments does not include the Wastewater Planning and Advisory Committee. It is hard to imagine that there's a more important committee for the future of our town at this time. Now that the decision...
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we have some sort of feedback.
Not only because we want to hear you two here.
Yeah, thank you.
See if we can resolve this.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. Mr. Gilberto's our technical, we're just a technical person.
He wears a lot of hats.
He's IT.
He's TA.
He has a lot of letters.
It's construction somewhere.
Okay. To the folks at home who may have video on, can you hear me? And if you can, could you just give us a thumbs up? I'm not seeing a thumbs up. To the folks who might be at home, if you can hear me, could you just give us a thumbs up?
Folks, do that.
There we go.
Dan.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Dan. We've gotten those before.
Apologize for the interruption.
No problem at all. Thank you for working through that. Now that the decision's been made by the Wastewater Planning Advisory Committee and the Wastewater Working Group that the wastewater project proposal needs to be overhauled, I ask that you, the Select Board, act on the commitment to transparency that you made to the people of North Reading when you unanimously voted to establish a 13-member Wastewater Planning Advisory Committee and to include four to 11 at-large representatives. Nearly $3 million of the town's money has been spent and a lot of hard work has been done by the Wastewater Working Group and the Wastewater Planning and Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, all of the work was done in secret closed-door meetings and we ended up with an unpopular proposal, a delayed special town meeting, and a delay to the beginning of the sewer project. I believe that having the same secret group come up with their second-best plan is not likely to achieve better results. Rather than repeating the mistake of making shady decisions in secret meetings, you have the opportunity to fill the 11 open seats on the Wastewater Planning and Advisory Committee and empower the committee to rework the proposal at open meetings and turn the proposal into a success. The democratic process depends on the public having knowledge about the considerations underlying governmental action. And I can tell from the results of the vote taken by this Board in January of 2020 that at least at that time, you, the members of the Select Board, were unanimous in your desire to ensure transparency in the deliberations on which the wastewater proposal was to be based. Clearly, if the Advisory Committee had been fully populated at that time or even in the spring of 2022, as Select Menelie later proposed, the town could have been spared this wildly unpopular proposal that was recently presented. In January of 2020, it was clearly the opinion of the Select Board that for a project of this size, having all of the project's deliberation done behind closed doors would not be in the best interest of the town. I ask that you now follow through and include the Wastewater Planning and Advisory Committee in your appointments and reappointments for early January of 2023. I've submitted my online citizens activity form to offer to join the committee and I'm certain that you won't have any trouble finding plenty of additional of additional highly qualified volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in public comment that's here this evening? In online, if you could just raise your hand or wave or unmute yourself if there's anybody that would wish to speak in public comment.
I am not seeing any Madam Chair.
Are we seeing everybody that's joined us?
We are, yes.
Okay. Okay, and I see a hand raised.
I think that's his.
No, no, that's, I see Kim Carpenter has a hand raised.
Yes. I believe, sir, you're muted. If you could unmute and please state your name and your comment.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Welcome.
Perfect. This, this whole, I mean, I don't know. I just found out about this five minutes ago. So I'm just logging on, see what's going on with the wastewater thing. And I'm over in Martin's Landing. And I think the biggest concern that we have over here is the fact that the sewer is being extended a half a mile and we're ponying up according to the recent, we're going to pony up $17.5 million of the sedimentation, which is 25% of the sedimentation for extending the wastewater a half a mile. And we have our own processing plant here which should go on forever. So it's a little unfair to what's over here in Martin's Landing.
Thank you for your...
Does that make any sense?
Well, of course, thank you for your comments.
Sir, could we ask for your, your name? And I know you said you live at Martin's Landing.
Look, Kim Carpenter. Building 200, 206 is the number.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I thought that, I thought, that's what his, I thought you read his name when he was...
I can't hear everybody because it's too far away from the microphone.
Okay, thank you. All right, so whoever does speak, if you got to get closer to the microphone.
It is.
That would be...
That would be...
Can you hear me now?
Madam Chair, through you.
I can.
Okay. It's not that my, my over there, right? It is, so Madam Chair, through you. So to the, to those who are trying to, who are watching and who are listening from home, we are having some technical difficulties during tonight's meeting. So there are times when you may not hear all of the audio. I think we'll all do our best to project ourselves so that you can be heard. You can see that the video is a little bit different than it is on most evenings. Three of the Board members appear in your picture. Mr. O'Leary is to Mr. Wallner's left. He does not appear in the picture, but he is here and he has spoken. So thank you for your patience and we will all try to speak more loudly so that the audio gets picked up.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you. Are you all set, Mr. Carpenter?
Well, I can hear, it's like a faint voice, but I'm hoping to speaker up to my, my face to see if I can hear her to this.
Yes, I've been accused of being very soft-spoken. All right.
Well, it's...
Does anybody else, does anybody else, that's just kidding. Does anybody else, would anybody else joining us like to speak in public comment? All set, Mr. Gilberto?
From what I can see, yes.
Okay, we're going to move on then to our next order of business. Actually, Mr. Gilberto, I know that we typically wait till Board member reports and I don't know if anybody wants to at this point while we do have people joining us or talking about wastewater as a public comment, if there's something by way of an update at this moment in time. I think everybody's aware that we are revamping and reviewing based on a number of the individuals that provided feedback. So it's at that stage. And I think that in terms of, in my response, and I don't, we don't typically do a back and forth on public comment, but I really do want to be clear in terms of how you categorize things. And my response to that would be that absolutely every single thing that we've done with regard to this has been during public open meetings and discussions with the public. We don't decide this. We shepherd what has been reviewed and studied and surveyed to the public for votes. And that's a process that we are going to continue following. And these are not overnight snap decisions that we make in the dark, in the hidden decisions. We make these decisions and we discuss these things at length. Sometimes well into the evenings our discussions go because there's an awful lot of planning and process and involvement in town employees and town directors that are involved in this, not just on the regular working hours, but long additional hours that they put in to consider these topics and these goals that we have as a town. When I first joined the Board, and I think we talked about this last meeting, was in 2015. Wastewater, the water contract itself in wastewater was a very public, very public discussion. And actually, the room that we had one of my first meetings in was the Distance Learning Lab and it was full of people who were there participating in the contract debate and discussion going on about where to join. And I appreciate the fact that this has at least generated a lot of people showing up now at these meetings to hear what we're discussing publicly. We really don't make secret decisions and we don't make shaded decisions. And I just want to make sure that I, I say that for the record. We hear feedback and we appreciate that. And we're in the same stead as you here. We're, we're all town citizens. Most of us are town taxpayers as well. So we're in the same stead and we're shepherds of what, what we're trying to do to help drive the town into a better economic picture. That does, it may not be popular. It may be wildly popular or it may be, as you categorize, wildly unpopular. But what we try to do is hold these public meetings so that we can engage everybody involved and everybody affected, which is every single one of the taxpayers here. So it's really important for us that we do hear these things publicly, discuss these things publicly. But having said that, we really, and it is our job as elected citizens to hear the feedback from everyone. And I think that's what the team, the team has been doing to be able to, the team has been doing to be able to sit down and hear all these concerns and review it. So it wasn't a canceled special meeting. It was, we were projecting to have this special meeting, but given the feedback with the public interface meetings...
We get it.
Now it's, now it's happening to me. It's not a rushed decision and we recognize that. And we hope that our fellow citizens recognize that too. That going back to review things isn't necessarily saying we're suddenly going to do things in the open because we...
That's, that's what we do. We are in the open.
And I don't know if there's anything else by way of update, if, if you'd like to add that.
The only thing, I mean, I'll, I'll say two things. The first is that the working group is taking the feedback that was reviewed at the November meeting in the Distance Learning Lab with the Board and trying to process it to something that could be brought to the Select Board and to the community to consider as an alternative to the model that was brought forth in September and then reviewed in October and November. The second thing is, Mr. Austin and I have had some correspondence. He has shared his concerns with regard to the working group. And I certainly will take the feedback he's provided directly to me, to the working group for their consideration as well. And we can, yes, further, further discuss the status of things at a meeting in January.
Yep, great, yes. That'd be great. Can we move, oh, Mr.? Mr. O'Leary.
Since generally I tend to be the face at this, at this point. And again, I understand people's consternation, frustration maybe. And again, the timeline associated with this again has been driven forward. I mean, we've been working on this for a decade or more.
I can't hear a good thing.
But because of the...
Mr. Gilberto, I'm sorry. Can you, I don't need to interrupt you, but can you mute? Could you mute? Thank you.
But, but because of the Mass DOT project, it was put on a faster track. And nothing has been, there are no secretive, behind-closed-door meetings. What it is, is it's a, it's a working group primarily consisting of town employees, department heads, hired consultants, and two members of this Board, you know, who are spending an extraordinary amount of time to get to a point where we can make a proposal to the community. We were hopeful that we could do something by December. We are being as transparent with you, Mr. Austin, and others in the public as we are with the rest of the members of the Board who are not part of the working group. You're hearing what we're presenting when they're hearing it. You know, we are constrained by the open meeting law. We can't consult behind closed doors and come to conclusions behind closed doors. You know, we have to do it in a public venue. So you're hearing it as they're hearing it, the other members of the Board are hearing it. I have said publicly numerous times that, you know, we wanted to have input from the community as we were going through the process. We've had over 400 people participate at this point, which is a wonderful thing. And we've heard wide range of opinions as to how we should go about this. And we're taking it, taking it into consideration. I've also said publicly a number of times, what you're witnessing is us mind wrestling in public with this issue and how are we going to progress to a point where we can bring it forward to the community for consideration in a favorable light, which is what we're going to continue to do. So I understand your frustration. I understand your willingness to serve, which we appreciate. But we're at a given point in time where it's difficult to coordinate a 13-person committee along with three or four different consulting groups, along with department chairs and personnel, and then Mr. Studo and myself scheduled to coordinate things. It would actually further delay things, which is what we're not looking to do. We're still looking to stay on schedule. We're still looking to come with a, a solution which is palatable to the majority of the community and we're not going to get everybody. That's okay. So I'm sorry if you, if you believe that there's something else going on here, but there isn't. And I appreciate your willingness to step forward. And if we find it, the opportunity to do so, and we think it's necessary to move forward with that, we will. And you'll certainly be considered along with other people who have also applied for, for the working group. But thank you very much and we'll have an update. Well, they got an update.
And I, and we do, I did want to say that too. It is welcome that you're stepping forward because we're, that's one of the other things that we spend a lot of time discussing is the lack of citizen participation. How can we generate interest in citizens standing forward? It is a lot to ask people to volunteer and it isn't for everybody, although a lot of people in the community do volunteer for other things besides sitting on a board or commission. It's hard work and we do appreciate that you filled that forum. And we're going to encourage other people too. And we are going to decide on one of those steps to filling the seats on that committee. And that would be, that's, that's a welcome thing if people are interested in it. And I'll plug for the other Boards and Commissions too that we've also been trying to fill to, for people to take a look on, on the website online. And that's what we're going to actually be spending a lot of our evening doing. So thank you for, for coming in tonight. Okay, we're going to move on to the next order of business, which is to introduce our new Director of Youth Services.
Madam Chair, we do have, we do have two hands up. I'm not, additional, additional hands, yes.
Are we for public comment?
I believe under public comment.
Oh, I thought we were, we moved on. I thought we had already moved on. Yeah, to people that have raised their hand for public comment.
Mr. Greenberg?
He may be muted. He's unmuted.
Mr. Greenberg, can you hear us? Your hand is raised.
We...
I am too.
Or Ms. Wh...
We cannot hear you if you're waiting for us to answer a question. We're only hearing one or two words every 10 or 12 words.
Ms. Welch, is that you?
It is me, yes.
Madam Chair, would you like to recognize Ms. Welch?
Sure. Ms. Welch, are you here for public comment?
I'm just here to let people know that the, the audio is not coming through. We're only hearing one or two words every 10 or 12 words.
Okay, thank you.
We are experiencing technical difficulty in the room this evening. We do have the phone line open for audio participation. We can hear what's coming in for comments, but I'm hearing that some folks are not able to hear what we are discussing. For those of you who do not know, an alternative to follow the video and audio is to tune to NORCAM, which is North Reading's cable access as well, where the audio is probably a bit better. And for those who are wishing to try to fill in anything that they might not have heard during the discussion, NORCAM actually rebroadcast the, the meetings and also posts the audio and video on their YouTube page which is accessible through their website.
And we, we can hear you. So if you are wanting to make public comment now, if you could just unmute, state your name and make public comment.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Greenberg?
Okay, let's hope, I thought we were done too. So I, I did think we were done.
He's lowered his hand.
He's lowered his hand.
If you can speak louder, I think that would maybe, I don't know if that's going to help.
That will help. And if everyone could speak right to that black disc that's on the table, that's where the audio is for Zoom.
When I finish my coffee, I'll make a megaphone.
All right, so let's introduce the new Director of Youth Services. That's the next order of business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you'll indulge, we're going to move to a spot where I know people might be able to hear better.
Madam Chair, thank you. With us this evening is Christina Gendolfo, who is our new Youth Services Director. She's here, if you want to stand up, Christina, to make that forward.
Welcome, hi.
She is joined by Public Services Director Lillian Hartman, who you all know, as well as Youth Services Committee member Amy DeChiaro is also here. Amy, thanks for coming up. Just a little bit of background regarding Christina. She was one of a handful of candidates that were interviewed by a screening committee that included Ms. Hartman and representatives of the Youth Services Committee. Christina, I don't know who else that forward so folks can see a little bit better.
I don't know if there's a camera.
There, there are many cameras, but the issue this evening is the audio, as you've heard.
Hi there, everyone.
Just to give folks a little bit of background for Christina, she has over eight years of teaching experience, both for English as a second language as well as teaching Spanish at a variety of grade levels in a variety of schools. She has a bachelor's degree from Salem State University and has done graduate work at the Harvard Graduate School of Education as well as the Universidad de Belgrano. How was that pronunciation?
Pretty good.
Buenos Aires, Argentina. She has quite a bit of diverse experience and background that she has, she has brought to our community. We sort of stumbled across Christina and she sort of stumbled across us, I think. She was initially a candidate for volunteer boards and committees and you may have seen her name in as an activity form for some boards and committees. Was very interested in a number of bodies and instead is focusing her time on the Youth Services Director position for now. But certainly has tremendous interest in helping in the community where she is also a resident as well. So fantastic for us to be able to move forward with the new Youth Services Director. Does anything you wanted to add or can it be done? Welcome.
Oh, thank you. I'm just really excited to, to be getting started and I'm starting to meet some of the, some of the people in the community at Town Hall and I'm learning kind of trial by fire how municipal government works. And it's, it's actually been really a lot of fun. And I can't wait to, to get started in January, get the, get the programs kind of up and running.
When you figure out how municipal government works, fill us in.
Yeah, let us know.
Fill us in, you know, for the bringing in.
We'll see.
And I knew the moment you spoke you had to teach your voice. I sat right up.
Okay, well, welcome. Our next order of business is to receive the update on Martin's Pond.
Sure.
Oh, welcome.
Hello, everybody.
How about going to that?
Yeah.
We moved to the disc.
Do you want to sit right in here, sir?
Have a seat.
You can sit, yeah, that's fine.
I would sit over there probably.
Yeah.
Want to sit with me?
Yeah, talk to the disc. Talk to the disc.
I'll talk to the disc. So there's a PowerPoint presentation, so, and I believe you're...
I have it and I'm going to share it.
So...
Are you sure you're going to do this? You're going to...
There's a, there's a flash drive, so that should work.
Yeah.
Yes, it should.
So far, it should.
So before, before it comes up, I just want to thank the Select Board for all of their support over the years with regards to Martin's Pond. We've, really since 2014, we've really done a lot of good work with the body of water, namely controlling all of the invasives that were really choking the pond out. mainly controlling all of the invasives that were really choking the pond out, all of the maintaining that we've been doing with the committee, with the select board's support. So thank you very much, so.
Could you introduce yourselves? We know who you are, but I don't, for anyone that's joining us, it'd be great for you to introduce yourselves.
I'm Jim Brer, I'm vice chair.
And I'm George Kenji, and I'm the chair. So, oh, okay.
So we do, we do have your PowerPoint up there.
What's that?
We do have your PowerPoint up there, and you can just cue me with the next slide command, and I'll move it right along.
Yeah, but so I just want to let you know how we got here. So August of 2021, we did a treatment for the invasives in the pond with a herbicide called Purcellacor, and it has had a tremendous result. We had the, we did the mapping last, in August, literally no invasives were in the pond. Pond was much healthier this year, more clearer this year, more thin, no odor. We had a lot more people kayaking, going and really just enjoying the pond, and the fishing has been tremendous, so we've really seen a positive result. But one of the things that, that we're continuing, or it's actually, you know, when you're, when you're dealing with a body of water, it's, as Jim says, it's like whack-a-mole. It's like, you know, you solve one thing and then something else comes up. But there were high phosphorus levels this year. In fact, we have the water tested every year, and it came back four times high, which is a little bit alarming, and, and I'll get to it, but why are we here? We're here because the select board asked us to look at possibly a dredging option for the pond. And again, I really appreciate them asking because it's so critical that, you know, you're behind the, the health of the pond, and it really is the jewel of North Reading. We have so many people come and enjoy. So what Jim and I did is we, we really took a holistic approach, and we looked at different options, but we are going to talk to you tonight about really what we learned about dredging, and we brought in Joe Ornato from Water Wetlands, who has direct experience with this. Before we get, as you'll find out, it is very expensive, very time consuming, but let's get to the data, so if you could change. Well, it's kind of hard to see, but those are water testing results in the fall of 2022, and there isn't a legend that kind of shows you from a phosphorus level, low, medium, and moderate high and medium high. And as you can see, our phosphorus level is really moderate high, which is somewhat alarming, but we're certainly not three star or four star. We're a two star, but that's a lot higher than it was when we tested last year. And then you can see the other water quality results, so there, it's pretty self-explanatory there, but it, but I, but I do want to note that we actively test the water every year, so. If you could advance, I'm sorry. So what does high phosphorus mean? Just that too much phosphorus can cause an increase growth of, at the growth of algae, large aquatic plants, which can result in decreased level of dissolved oxygen. I can tell you that this, I've been on the pond since 97, and there definitely was a lot of late algae blooms this year, where you can actually see a little bit of green covering the surface around the edges, not the whole pond, kind of right in front of like my area and down. That's something that I haven't seen in years. Usually the blooms are in July and August, where the water is really, really warm and the temperature is really warm. And as you know, a few years ago, one of the most harmful blooms you can have is cyanobacteria. They call that the blue-green algae, and we actually had to close the pond, I want to say it was four years ago, where we had to have it tested and retested until it got to safe levels. And that's something we're really trying to avoid, because that caused a lot of upset within the community. People really didn't understand, why can't I use my boat? Why can't I go fishing? And cyanobacteria has the ability to produce toxins, which can really affect health of animals, humans. I'm not going to read this line by line, you folks have already seen it. And in bodies of water with incredibly dense plants, your tropical water, and even other plants suffer from low, low oxygen. So, so phosphorus is a big deal. If you could advance, please. You know, so basically, the first bullet is, yeah, phosphorus levels is four times higher than what it was last year. Now, you know, we talked to Joe from Water Wetlands, we had really hot weather conditions this past summer, very, very dry, something like we had in Seattle before. That could, but when I drove around Harold Parker, which is part of the watershed, there was a lot of top algae, like I haven't seen before. So, you know, Martin's Pond is the widening of the Scott River, so everything flows through that. We are now part of Ipswich River Watershed Association. It was a proposal for Rivers Partnership to receive funding from Mass DEP for water quality monitoring. So basically, we're part of that program, so we're going to be testing our water for phosphorus and chlorophyll six times a year. It's part of a conglomerate, so that, that's something that we were able to get on board. Jim, if you want to talk about contacting that legway, because you've already done that.
Yeah, so part of, you know, looking at the possible feasibility for dredging, I did contact ESS, which is one of the consulting firms that does this. They're actually, if you saw the dredging they're doing in Lynnfield, that came out a couple of months ago, they were, they did the feasibility study on that. Feasibility study just to figure out how much it would cost, it'd be about $50,000. And then dredging is probably around half a million dollars per acre. So depending how much we want to dredge, and that's by foot, it would, it would be ten, ballpark $50 million to dredge the pond. And there's a lot of problems associated with that. If there is contaminants in the, yeah, in the sediment, then STAB will shut it down.
Yeah.
And then basically, at that point in the disposal, keep adding zeros to it, so it's, it's, it's fraught with.
It's almost, yeah, it's almost like a lead paint effect. Once you, once you get into something, you just don't know what you're getting into. I speak to that just a little bit more in another slide, but there are other options, including, so one of them is hydraulic dredging. We can do an alum treatment, there's water diversion and filtration, and then there's a new product called Utrasorb, which is really proving to be highly effective, because with phosphorus, you don't know if it's in the soil, you don't know if it's coming in from other bodies of water, and it could be a combination of both. But this particular herbicide here really penetrates the soil. So if your phosphorus is coming from the soil, it's actually going to get it there, because if you do an alum treatment, that's just, that's just treating the water that's, that's in the pond today. So if you could advance, thank you. So this is what hydraulic dredging looks like. There's a big ugly barge that will be in the pond, or would be in the pond for a couple of years anyway, and what it does is it, it's like a big suction vacuum. What it does is it sucks the soil, and then you have to have, probably for us, Jim estimated, I'm sorry, Joe Ornato, we'd probably need an area available to us, at least the size of two football fields, that we could pump the sediment directly to. Then what would happen is there would be trucks that would need to come in and be loaded, and the sediment would need to be, you know, removed. So it's a really big process. You might have to, you know, some dredging efforts, some roads have been taken offline or broken up for piping to run under, so it's not something that is, you know, a lot of people think it's self-contained, it's not. So that's just, that's just what it looks like there. And that's a very tiny pond, and you can see the, the earth that has come out of that. That's a very small body of water. Okay. So like anything else, there's pros and cons to everything we do, right? So pros generally cleans the water, increases oxygen levels for aquatic life, allows for safe boating, fishing, swimming, reduces foul loaders, lowers the risk of flooding, and may increase property values due to having an aesthetically pleasing body of water. You know, I will say, in Martin's Pond right now, we're not at a loss for oxygen, we have very healthy aquatic life. You know, people are able to boat and swim and fish. Again, just with the eradication, well, you know, never fully eradicated, but the control of the invasives, no more foul loaders. Cons of hydraulic dredging, it is extremely expensive and time consuming, there are big logistical challenges, and there's a high potential for unintended consequences and environmental setbacks, as Jim alluded to, and it doesn't permanently solve the problem with the pond. It can easily upset the ecosystem, it can impact the wildlife, surrounding environments, and the pond is pretty much offline and unusable. If the goal, and this is the, what I'm going to kind of get to at the end, the goal is, you know, what's the result we're trying to create? The pond is reasonably healthy, and, you know, is the juice worth the squeeze, so to speak. So, next slide. Other considerations, you know, as I said, Martin's Pond is the widening of the Scott River, and people forget that. It's a pasture, it's not a contained body of water. We basically have river water, which is full, which is tannic, so that's why you get that brownish color. I can tell you, if you go to the pond, like right now, so late fall, early spring, it is, it is crystal clear. But what happens is, is the warmer weather comes, and the turbidity is back, so that's what gives it its color. Dredging product for 95 acres would be tens of millions, and that's for, for certain, not to mention there's other costs, as permitting, material disposal. We also, as I said, already covered that, we need at least a couple of football fields from what we've been quoted, roads may have to be cut for piping, all of that. As I said, it's like the lead paint situation. If we find something unplanned or contaminants in the soil, and, you know, all of the stories that, and, you know, urban legends of everything that people used to dump in Martin's Pond during the day, we just don't, don't know what's in that soil. And so there could be huge DEP implications. Pond to be offline for a couple of years. Again, I talked about the color of the waters because of the turbidity. And the color of the water is actually in our favor, because during the heavy growth months for invasives, it actually blocks the sunlight. If Martin's Pond was crystal clear, it would, it would just blossom with invasives, because our mean is only seven feet. It's not deep at all. So it's actually working better for us. So that's why the treatment, really, if you think about where we've had to treat, it's only necessary to treat around the, the edges, not so much even, even 50 feet out. We're also part of the Ipswich Watershed, so there may be upstream and downstream impacts if we were to do this. And the muck itself, believe it or not, depending on where you live, it's not evenly distributed. An example, and I didn't find anybody that would like to go for a swim, if you go to my dock and you walk into the water to the left of the dock, you're on rock the whole way until you're underwater. There's no muck. But if you go to the right side, yeah, you're going to be stepping in muck. And at the end of the day, it isn't pond, there's going to be muck, that's just a byproduct. And so if we were to consider this, we would need to do a full feasibility study using an environmental engineering firm, which is Jim, so it would be about $50,000. And again, I am a university president, this is not what I do on a daily basis, but I've learned a hell of a lot about this over the years, so, but we would definitely want experts to come in to do that study and to present. Next slide, please. There are some lower cost options for phosphorus, for mitigation cyanobacteria. There's algicide treatment, which, which I talked about. There's also filtration nutrients. I talked about that option, Utrasorb filters, or biochair socks, or low-cost filtration devices, which can be placed kind of at the outfalls where the water's coming in to try to catch phosphorus there. It's about $250 per filter, but there is a manual component to that. It's not ideal. Could do a low dose alum treatment, but as I said, it's only going to control the state of the water and not the source. And, you know, what we need to do, and, and Jim will talk about that when I wrap up, because you had a conversation just about, you know, we can break, we can have an ESS come in, you've, you've already talked to the gentleman, that can really do a deeper study in the pond, that can tell us, hey, your phosphorus is in your soil, or phosphorus is not in your soil, it's actually coming, coming downstream, or, hey, it's a combination of both. But until we do that study, which is probably $8,000 to $10,000, with a recommendation coming off of that, we're just not going to know the source of the phosphorus. Or we could test, you know, in, in the spring and find out, wow, our phosphorus numbers really, really dropped, and they may, we don't know. That's why we test, and the beauty of being a, a part of that conglomerate is we're going to be testing six times a year. So we know exactly what's going on in the pond. And then that, that, that new product, Utrasorb, if it is, if, if the root of phosphorus is in the soil, that's probably the way to go, and will be the cheapest option, probably to go that route. And I think the next slide is, we're done. Nice, pretty view there for you, so. So, you know, we, we were asked to look into it, we looked into it. If the select board was really interested in moving forward, the next step would, would be to coordinate that feasibility study, but it'd be about $50,000, so.
Well, the first step would be the $10,000 feasibility study.
Yeah.
And that would, that would let them do some granular sampling of what we got. The, the testing we've done has been only spots over the past few years, and we used to do this, I used to live in New Hampshire, and the state up there actually funds volunteers to go out and do the, do the testing at a cheap rate. And up there, the practice was to go out and do samples three times in the summer at 13 spots, and the pond, it was about twice the size of ours. And it gave us a good longitudinal read over the years of what we had in the lake. We don't have that here, we need to establish that baseline.
So, I mean, we believe that next step should be, let's continue to see what the phosphorus is looking like, and then can determine steps from there, and so. If anybody has any questions?
Very, very helpful presentation on these things, and let me just ask my colleague, if there's any questions or comments, Mr. O'Leary?
Sure. You know, thank you very much for taking the time, and I know you have the interest, because you've been there for quite a while now. But again, the board collectively unanimously believes, you know, this is, as you said, a gem of the community here, that not very many people in the community even take advantage of or come over, have been over there, believe it or not. But it's a resource that's available to us, it's a, it's something that we need to address and take care of, and we've made a commitment to, to do just that. And as we said, you know, take a look, what does it mean to dredge it, what's, the effect's going to be. You've answered the questions. So it's, that's good, and I think we should embrace what you're proposing here, and take the methodical steps necessary to move forward, because again, we don't want to lose it, and we certainly want to invest in it if we have to, and if we can do it, you know, far more economically than what we're talking about with the dredging, we should do it.
Well, thank you, and like I said, you know, we really do, if you looked at the pond in 2014, before we did our first invasive, and you look at it today, it's just absolutely remarkable. It's night and day difference. It's so usable now. But, but no, we, we do appreciate that, and we, so long as I am in this role and with Jim, because, you know, we wouldn't do it without each other, we'd be a great team. I, I mean, we're going to continue to be good stewards and act in the best interest of the pond. The one thing that I would like to circle back to, because we've talked about it since when we got the, the last one, we went before the town to get the 25,200 Purcellacor, which we're going to be, we're in year two of that, and there's a three-year guarantee, actually, we're in, just finished up year one, there's a three-year guarantee of no growth, and we haven't seen any growth, not on wood, and that may, Jim's experience with that, with that herbicide is, it may continue for more years to come. So like this year, we didn't need to do anything, and as we've said to the town and the select board, we understand the importance of financial resources, we also understand the importance is, we do not want to over-treat anything. We want to keep the pond as natural as possible while keeping it healthy. So, so really, we're, we're lucky that we didn't have to do anything this year, may not have to do anything next year or the year after, but we really, we talked about this a couple of years ago, we would really ask the select board, I think, Mr. O'Leary, you and I talked about this, and, and I've already and I've talked about this, is really adding a line item into the town budget, say $15,000, and if we need it throughout the year, great, we'll have a resource to pull from. We don't understand if it drops, because they know how the budget works, but just to have that there in the event we need it, would really be peace of mind for us, so we can go out and get the work done and continue to do the work, versus having, you know, having to come, which we do not like coming in front of this group at all, but it would just, it would just save some steps. So I just ask you to consider that.
Digress briefly, we have five, or had five significant invasive plants in the pond. Eurasian milifol, which is what the original treatment was for, fanwort, also done with that, variable milifol, which was not treated for in 2014, but was very predominant in the last couple of years. predominant in the last couple of years. Uh, curly pond weed and, um, water chestnut. Thank you. Uh, so the two milifoles got wiped out and they're, I mean, it's, that stuff is pretty specific to milifol and took them down bad. Uh, the fanwort is basically restricted to via the boat launch area. And when, uh, Ward and Wentlands came by to do a survey, they only found it within a hundred feet of the launch and was not deemed worthy of doing anything with this year.
And we believe that has come in just like everything else on boat regulars.
Uh, the curly pond weed, we have it, it's there for a couple of weeks and intended to go away, so it's just one of those things, we keep an eye on it. And the water chestnut is, is manual, and if you go out and pull it, which we've been getting some volunteers to go out and bring in boatloads literally of, uh, water chestnut, uh, you can pull it, and if it doesn't have a chance to set seeds, then you can control it by hand. So we've been doing that, uh, the past couple of years.
Yep.
So that's just a, a console where the invasives are.
Yep.
I'll say, Mr. Walner?
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with these issues, obviously. I've lived in there too, so everything they said is true. Uh, but I think that, that idea of the eight to ten thousand dollars for feasibility on the phosphorus, that makes a lot of sense to me to beat the next step. And that will lead us to the next, you know, next level of taking care of the pond. So, you know, personally, I, you know, hearing what I've heard so far, I would be in support of that. And I'd like the idea of, I know we've talked about the line item, we're doing something so that, you know, we're just constantly funding and it's not a, you know, it's, it's no big deal to find the money, but on the other hand, you know, we shouldn't have to wait for town meeting to get it done. So it'd be good for us to do that. So thank you for doing that. I know that I asked you to do something that, you know. We don't wanna do dredging. I understand, but just, we needed to share the information with everybody before we, uh, it came to that conclusion.
It's a pretty big learning process, so thank you for that. I'm wiser now.
In some cases it works, some, some places it works, but not, not, doesn't sound like it's gonna work here.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'll, I'll take responsibility for throwing that out there.
Okay.
Just because, you know, I, it, the question needed to be answered, so.
Strategic planning meetings was one of the things that we talked about, we were brainstorming about it and, um, you know, that's.
I mean, obviously, we'll continue to revisit it, but if we can do it, the cheaper, uh, control solutions would be the.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. At Bentley University, we say, I think, President's Cabinet, evidence-based decision, decision-making, data-driven, so happy to have done the research.
Amen to that.
Yep.
That's what we like. I'll say, Mr. Walner?
No, I just wonder how we actually, uh, we can ask afterwards how to actually get that one, I mean, like how we.
And I'm actually, I think we did talk about it during budget time and, and, uh, made sure there was an earmark in there, right, Mr. Bilberto?
Well, we talked about, Madam Chair, through you, we talked about making a request, and I've asked the Public Works Director to make a request for Fiscalia two thousand twenty-four.
This would be his.
Yeah, and that, that's generally who the committee has worked with when it's come to the maintenance and treatment.
Right. I think the consensus at the time was, put the line item in so they don't have to keep coming back every year. There should be some resources available for whatever treatment.
It is hard to find the money, but the board, I think that's one of the goals for the board is to ensure that it, it is there. I remember the first time you came to us and you needed, I think, five thousand dollars over a three-year period of time. And you're like, what do you mean? We were surprised at that, but we wanted to make sure we kept, I think you were doing a different type of testing?
Yeah.
And I also appreciate the fact that you're finding out these other resources that we can utilize to, to do the testing. I think that's fabulous, so.
Yeah, and, and what's better about, you know, because what happened is we did in fourteen, that big treatment, and then we had zero resources, then we went three years, and then it came back, and we just, it kinda got away from us a little bit because we weren't able to be more nimble because we didn't have the resources. But by being able to look at it three or four, you know, we have it mapped twice a year, being able to, okay, we have a little bit of growth here, let's, let's hit it and knock it back. So instead of waiting years and then it's like, well, now we've got, you know, forty acres we have to treat, so, but, but we thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez, any questions, comments, or?
Uh, I have a comment. I just wanna say, wow, we are so fortunate, this community, to have volunteers like this to put their time in, and I'm gonna name you the dream team of Martin's Pond. I mean, your knowledge and your, I, I, I'm just appreciative.
Thank you. We care deeply about it.
It, it shows. And that you, and you're not just jumping to something, you're really taking the time to make sure it's the right thing to do, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely. I was gonna say the same, that we really appreciate this. It's a long-term effort and dedication. We love that you're data-driven decision-makers, that's what we like. We love that, how much information you provide us every time you come to, to see us, and we know this isn't your day job, so we are, we're all here. Your volunteer commitment is, is so, so appreciated, and, and it's not just for that area, it's for the whole town, so we really appreciate the effort that you put in.
Thanks, and, you know, I don't know if, you know, she's watching, but I do owe a debt of gratitude to Janet Nacosh for years.
Uh, she's great.
Really, really, just passionate, and, you know, it was really because of Janet's passion that brought me into the committee, and then, you know, Janet did this like tirelessly for so long, and she, you know, asked if I'd be up, and like, of course I would, you know, I need a break, so, um, so she paved the way and, you know, really, in so many ways, and having Jim move in and having the experience who's able to complement what I do, so we really make a good team. And we have a great committee, dedicated folks.
Great. So we'll, um, take, definitely take that into consideration, but I, I do think we ask for it to be, to, there to be some funding appropriated, if, hopefully the town agrees with that in the town meeting, but at least in terms of the budget.
And if, you know, hey, if it is, that's great, but if not, whatever, we, and I know we can, we can come forward with an ask, so.
Yeah.
No problem.
Well, let's do that, the, the ten thousand dollar feasibility. Yeah, bring that, yeah, please.
And I think that should be in addition to whatever, whatever the normal appropriation's going to be. That's gonna be outside of the normal appropriation that's been requested.
And there's also, I just wanna be clear that, because we've had a budget, that we've been really good stewards of that budget, that there's still some funds there that I would advocate, let's use those first because they're available to us. I just don't know how, how much it is. I have to talk to Joe Parisi to find out what we've got left, so, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
George missed dinner tonight to be here, so.
Actually, no, it was fine. You got me out of the ditch.
Oh, you didn't tell me that. I've been guilty for three weeks, and now you told me that.
It's a public, public, public.
Thank you so much. And just look at all you learned about the pond, right? I mean, you came in here, you didn't even know what phosphorus was. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are on our next order of business, which is appointments and reappointments. And we have twelve of you.
And Madam, Madam Chair, through you, for the board members, there was a separate document that I had emailed around this afternoon. I placed in chair file, and I believe you printed for Mr. Walner to read from, for tonight, so.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment or appointment as member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five, and there's one open. The names are Robert Breen, Brendan Riley, John Verengia, Nathaniel Chomp, Steve Correll, and William Burkman.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo is the liaison, um, on head committee, and unfortunately had a family emergency, which is why he could not be here this evening, so. I'm sorry. Robert Breen? And Robert Breen is the incumbent.
There's only one opening, so that would be.
And there's one opening? I don't know if the board wants to, to deliberate that because I'm not sure if we, we, you know, typically get the input from the liaison, but I don't know if there's any thought in terms of just reappointing the incumbent, Mr.?
I mean, I will share, I saw an email from the Chair, Ms. Platt, and spoke with Mr. Studo recommending Mr. Breen for reappointment.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I should've asked you first, because we usually put the liaison, so I guess we have, we do at least have that recommendation. And is there any further discussion? Okay, so if this is, this is a name, a role called main vote.
So Robert Breen is the incumbent?
Robert Breen's the incumbent. You've named the list of nominees, and now it's a name, it's a role called main vote. We'll start with Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Breen?
Mr. Walner.
Robert Breen?
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Robert Breen.
Manu Kelly is Robert Breen.
Madam Chair, through you, um, there are two associate member, um, positions that were open. You may recall, we advertised in the fall to get, um, candidates. We were able to appoint one person. Uh, that left two open associate member positions, um, for which we've created two motions, one for a term to expire twenty twenty-four, one for a term to expire twenty twenty-five, and both Ms. Platt, who was the Chair of the Board of Appeals, and Mr. Studo, the liaison, are recommending Brendan Riley for the term ending in twenty twenty-four and for, sorry, let me just check the dates on that. Yeah. Brendan for twenty twenty-four and Mr. Verengia for the term ending twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and are there any other names that, that are gonna be put in? There were, there are, okay. So Mr. Riley and Mr. Verengia are the liaison and the board chair's recommended picks, right? Mr. Bilberto?
Correct.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment, reappointment as an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire. Brendan Riley, Associate, December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four, John Verengia, twenty twenty-five, Nathaniel Chomp, Steve Correll, and William Burkman.
I think you have two separate motions for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay. So, so this is for the twenty twenty-four appointment?
Okay.
Correct.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none for this appointment, Mr. O'Leary.
Brendan Riley.
Mr. Walner.
Brendan Riley.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Brendan Riley.
And Manu Kelly is Brendan Riley.
And then the second is for John Verengia, uh, twenty twenty-five, Nathaniel Chomp, Stephen Correll, and William Burkman.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary.
John Verengia.
Mr. Walner.
John Verengia.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
John Verengia.
And Manu Kelly is John Verengia.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Conservation Commission for terms to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Melissa Campbell, who's the incumbent, and Elizabeth Mitchell, and there's one open.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. And Mr. O'Leary?
Uh, Melissa Campbell is the current incumbent, uh, serving well, working hard, and a recommendation of myself, and the Chair is Melissa Campbell.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Melissa Campbell.
Mr. Walner.
Melissa Campbell.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Melissa Campbell.
And Manu Kelly is Melissa Campbell.
Uh, Conservation Commission, full member. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Conservation Commission for terms to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. There's one opening. James Chaney, incumbent, full member, or Elizabeth Mitchell?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. We'll hear from Mr. O'Leary.
Uh, just as a matter of clarification, Madam Chair, uh, James Chaney is, is currently an associate member. He's been serving and, uh, participating regularly. Uh, there is a, an unexpired term, which was just created this past week. Laura Bashara found it necessary to resign midterm, so her term would have expired December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, so we're looking to fill the unexpired term, and the recommendation from, uh, the Chair and myself is Mr. Chaney.
Unexpired term for the term?
That ends December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. All right, any further discussion? Will that lead to another appointment for an associate?
There's a need for an associate member. We'd like to hold off at this particular point to just reassess what we have for individuals who have applied for it, and, uh, we're still looking to contact, uh, Ms. Mitchell, uh, because she's put in for other positions too. Uh, so we can, we still have another associate member. Uh, if you recall, about two or three years ago, we were hurting for members of the Conservation Commission. We put out the cry and, uh, we got a bevy of candidates, qualified candidates, so we still have, uh, we still have a, a farm league here, which is good. So we will be back, uh, probably in January or February, uh, with the appointment of a associate. Thank you.
All right, that's kind of unusual that, that we would have, this, you know, almost the whole thing almost filled, so that's great. But it's, uh, we've heard from the liaison, and Mr. Chaney is recommended. Is there any further discussion?
I just had a question. Um, Mr. O'Leary said twenty twenty-three, but, um, am I reading the motion right? It says twenty twenty-five?
It says twenty twenty-five, what was printed, but that was an error.
Oh, okay.
It's twenty twenty-three is the unexpired.
All right.
The twenty twenty-five term is for the full three-year term that Melissa Campbell.
Thank you.
That we just reappointed.
Okay. I just, I didn't.
The unexpired term was, uh, Laura Bashara.
All right.
Twenty twenty-three.
But, um, sorry, that we just appointed, it, we're all, it's a, they're.
Just like this board.
So someone's just stepping into.
Right.
Just like this board, there's five members, and it's a two, two and two term, two, two and one, and Melissa Campbell's was the single C.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
James Chaney.
Mr. Walner.
James Chaney.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
James Chaney.
And Manu Kelly is James Chaney.
Next is process-serving constables. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment as process-serving constables for terms to expire on December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. And there's four openings, so we have two names. Douglas Lab, incumbent, and David Rosati, incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. We'll hear from Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yeah, so, um, like you said, there are four openings, um, and two people coming forward, incumbents. Um, so, yeah, anybody out there who would like to be a constable? We're all ears. Um, so, yeah, I would recommend that we, uh, not, that we vote in both of them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So it's a, uh, Mr. Lab and Mr.?
Rozati.
Rozati. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Douglas Lab, David Rozati.
Mr. Wallner.
Douglas Lab, David Rozati.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Douglas Lab, David Rozati.
And Manu Kelly is Douglas Lab and David Rozati.
Okay. Cultural Council. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment to the Cultural Council for terms to expire on December 31, 2025. There's three openings, and there's three names. Susan Smith, Maxine McPherson, and Elizabeth Mitchell.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner, we'll hear from you.
I'm going to invite Phil, if he wants to come out for a second, just since he's the Chair. Please tell us.
Coming out from behind the curtain.
Coming out from behind the curtain.
I don't know that I'm going to recognize Phil Smith. I'm going to go for Chair. I will, this
Is that okay? Is that okay?
Come on.
Get chance.
I'm just, I'm just kidding.
I just asked him to just give us just brief
Well, we don't usually get to hear from
I know.
No, that's right, and for good reason. No, thank you for having me, Rich. And, yeah, as a cultural council, I was just looking over before I came in, kind of like, oh, yeah, I have to talk about stuff. So, we, we awarded about $8,000 in reimbursements this past year, calendar year, fiscal FY '22. We've given to such programs as Community Coral. They have switched Community Coral, which you probably recognize, they had a holiday concert, I think, last month. And we've been giving pretty much to various programs at the senior center and around. Pretty much, we've given, I think, like, up to 40 grantees in the last two years, which is pretty good. It's gone up considerably in the last. We actually got rid of a lot of back, or we're getting rid of a lot of money that was kind of accrued over the years that was kind of confusing how it got there. It was like, it was like $15,000, and we're just slowly, like, cutting back on it. So, it's been, been kind of crazy. And so, yeah, no, and these two, we actually lost a bunch of members this year, too, because it's like any committee, like Ms. Gonzalez was saying about, you know, the becoming a constable, you know, we need, we're at four right now, and these will be two. Out of, I think, and I think, Jen, actually, I had to ask, yeah, these are the two from here, and I think we only have four active ones. I think there are five listed. Someone else bowed out, but needs to officially send you an email. So, I think we voted also to have, like, nine as our cap. So, we're looking for, you know, many more, whoever wants to be a part of it. So, yeah, these two, I believe it was also Elizabeth Mitchell. I forget the, I apologize, I forget the other name I had.
Yeah, I have, I have two.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, so, good to go. I recommend, I recommend them all.
Great to, great to hear from you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, I went on.
Now, get back to work.
From behind the camera, literally.
This is cameo appearance on camera.
We don't hear what they do, like, I didn't know that.
Right.
All right. So, Susan Smith, Maxine McPherson, Elizabeth Mitchell, and I respect whoever he wants to have on this.
And those are the recommend, recommendations?
Those are, and those are the three openings that are open.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Susan Smith, Maxine McPherson, Elizabeth Mitchell.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, Susan Smith, Maxine McPherson, Elizabeth Mitchell.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Susan Smith, Maxine McPherson, and Elizabeth Mitchell.
And Manu Kelly is Susan Smith, Maxine McPherson, and Elizabeth Mitchell.
Great. Okay, next is the Forest Committee. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment as member to the Forest Committee as for the terms to expire on December 31, 2025. So, there's Dana Rowe, who's the incumbent, and the Chair, Douglas Doughty, who's the incumbent, and then Nikki Tosi, who is a recent addition. Dana has not been able to speak to Doug or Nikki yet, so I'm just asking that we just do Dana tonight, or we either pass over, or we just do Dana tonight, and then come back with the other two minutes, whatever you thought.
How many spots?
There's, it's funny, the Forest Committee is limited to three official spots.
Right.
So, there's Doug Doughty, Dana Rowe, and then Allison, who we've met before.
Right.
That's it. So, it's just a question of Doug and Nikki, who should be that third person?
Doug is
And Dana hasn't talked to Doug yet, so
Okay, but does Doug put in his interest in being reappointed?
He's just not ready to make a recommendation. So, I'm just asking for another session.
We would want to, my thought is, we would want to appoint at least one so they have a forum to meet.
Yes.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so Dana Rowe?
Yeah, so for now Dana Rowe.
All right. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Dana Rowe?
Mr., yes, I'm sorry. It was a motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, no further discussion, right?
No, other than, I know Mr. Doughty, I know that he has an interest, he has been serving, and
He's been serving on?
He has been serving on the Forest Committee, yeah, yeah. So, I have, if the Chair and the liaison wish to hold off at this particular time to just verify, although he has expressed an interest in continuing to serve.
I'd rather, I'd rather reappoint while we are, it's the pleasure of the Board, especially someone that's an incumbent that is willing to take the role on again. Do there, are there associate members of this?
Not, not, it's like a state, it's like a really weird state law that we can't have, we can't have people visit, they can't be associates.
Yes, okay, okay.
The Forest Committee is limited, we can't figure out, anyways.
We usually go along with the liaison recommendation. If we can get to it quickly, and there's no, he'll be serving until the end of this year? Mr. Doughty?
No, to 2025.
No, if we don't.
Yeah, his term expires December 31st.
Yeah.
Okay. But as long as we appoint the, as long as we appoint the Chair again, and has a forum, I think that would be wise, and then we can just wait to hear back?
Yeah, just, he just wanted a chance to call himself, that's all.
Okay, all right. Okay, whatever the most pleasure is. It's a motion, second, we had, no, that's a little confusing, but a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, we had started the vote, and I could tell you wanted to talk about it a little bit more.
No, no, just as I said, I know Doug, he's willing to serve, but, you know, if the liaison and the, and the Chair wish to hold off, that's fine. I'll just vote for Mr. Rowe.
All right. Mr. Wallner?
Dana Rowe?
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Dana Rowe?
And Manu Kelly is Dana Rowe.
Okay. Hillview Commission. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Hillview Commission for terms to expire on December 31, 2025. Two openings, many names. Henry Burke, Michael Robert Genapoli, Theodore Hagerty, Nicola Heron, Patrick Lee, Carol Mason, Nicholas Massie, Nick McPherson, Kristen Sullivan, and Frances Toner Guzzo.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
As you can see, we always have a lot of interest in the Hillview Commission,
Yeah.
which is a good thing, but, you know, we have two vacancies this year because two incumbents, for varying reasons, are not seeking reappointment. Our Treasurer, Peter Hemmy, has changed residence. He still retains property in North Reading, but has changed residence, so under the charter isn't eligible to continue on. And I can tell you right now, you know, we've only had three Treasurers in 35 years, actually four. I was, I was an interim for a little while when I was on the Commission, so actually four. But Mr. Hemmy has been serving for about a dozen years and has been a tremendous steward for the enterprise, and his service is greatly appreciated, and most people don't understand, you know, what goes into ensuring that the enterprise remains viable, and he has served us very well. Additionally, Dan Doherty has been on almost an equal number of years, who's in the restaurant business and has been extremely helpful in relation to not just all the goings-on of the, of the Commission itself, comes to the golf course, all the rest, but also the Function Hall Pub, both under the last two vendors that have been there and the current one. And he, his service has been invaluable up until and including his last meeting, which was Wednesday evening. He helps, he was instrumental in making sure that the purchase of the proper equipment for the Function Hall main kitchen. Vendors were there, the equipment had been ordered, and right to the bitter end, he's still working for us. But again, his business commitments are not allowing him to spend the requisite amount of time to do so. So, again, both Mr. Hemmy and Mr. Doherty, we greatly appreciate the time and energy that has been put in and volunteered for the town, for the Commission, ensuring that the enterprise is still very strong and very viable. And the service has been invaluable and greatly appreciated. That being said, Mr. Stack, who's the Chair, apologizes for not being available this evening to be here to answer the questions, if you have any. But the recommendations by the Chair and myself would be Theodore Ted Hagerty and Nicola Heron to take the, the two terms. Mr. Hagerty is a comptroller by trade in a business, and we need a Treasurer, and has volunteered to take on the role as Treasurer. He's quite capable. He's spent six years on the Finance Committee here in North Reading, understands municipal finances, understands how the enterprise operates. And Mr. Hemmy has also offered him his services to bring him up to speed. So, the vital role of Treasurer would be assumed by Mr. Hagerty. Mr. Heron is also in the restaurant business, well-known in the community, lifelong resident of the community, and would bring valuable insight in relation to assisting in the operations of the Function Hall, particularly, we have a new vendor here looking to venture into expansion of the, of the restaurant business there. I think his expertise would be extremely invaluable. Again, not to diminish the expertise and serve, of the rest of the volunteers, they all bring something to the table. But I think the Chair and I agree that what's needed on the Commission right now is a Treasurer, and someone who understands the restaurant business extremely in-depth and could assist in the new vendors that are there as they look to expand their operation. So, the recommendation is Theodore Hagerty and Nicola Heron. Madam Chair, through you, just to clarify, it is Nicholas Heron. It is Nicholas. There's an issue with the spelling. Nicholas. We checked in the poll book, and it is Nicholas. Nicholas Heron.
Any further, I, any further discussion? Is that Patrick Lee?
That's what I was going to ask. That's Pat Lee?
Who also ran the Function Hall?
Correct.
Confused why he wouldn't be valuable.
He would be valuable. He would be extremely valuable. But we believe that right now the Commission could utilize someone with similar background and expertise, with some new ideas in relation to what can happen there, and as opposed to what has happened there. We're looking forward, and looking for new ideas, new blood, and people with the requisite expertise to serve the Commission and the community well.
Any further discussion on that? What is the background, Mr. O'Leary?
Restaurateur.
In North Reading?
No, he's a lifelong resident of North Reading and has had background in several restaurants, currently one in Beverly that he's operating. His family has been in the restaurant business for several decades, and is extremely familiar in the day-to-day operations of operating functions and restaurants.
And then
And again, it's a, as is the case with a number of other people who are seeking appointment, I have known a number of these people for a number of years, in many cases decades. So, it's not always easy to, to make a choice when you only have two seats. So, we try and do what we believe is in the best interest of the enterprise, of the Commission, and the community as a whole, looking forward.
I don't doubt that, but I just think of the list, the name that jumps out after being Mr. Lee, he was even on, he was even the president of the State Association, Restaurant Association, so.
Theodore Hagerty. What was the back, I know you said accountant, did you say there was restaurant?
Accounting, he's a comptroller.
What is that?
Comptroller, is, is Chief Financial Officer for this business, which is a major corporation, and he also spent six years on the Finance Committee.
Does he have background in restaurant and?
There's more to the, actually, the bulk of the revenue here is not the restaurant at all.
The golf, it's the golf.
The restaurant and the Function Hall facility is a very small, small, small percentage of what revenue is generated. You're generating about $3,000 a month out of there, as opposed to over a million dollars in revenue from the, from the golf course. In addition to that, we have revenues from, included with the golf courses, the golf carts. We have a contract coming up for GFMI, who's going to operate the, who's going to operate the golf course, going out the bid in the next year. So, we think Mr. Hagerty is well-suited and getting up in conversations with Mr. Hagerty, conversations with members of the Finance Committee, in relation to their relationship with Mr. Hagerty, and everything.
Mr. Hemmy's a huge loss to
Pardon me?
Mr. Hemmy's a big loss.
Mr. Hemmy is a big loss, Mr. Doherty is a big loss. Again, we've been very careful over the years in relation to who we put on this, on the Commission, because it is an enterprise, it is important for it to remain fiscally viable, and for the most part, everybody that's served on the Commission has been, have been great stewards.
What do you mean, for the most part?
I could, I could think of one appointment, but
We won't go there.
I'm not going there.
We're all to a vote.
And again, and some people might have a pity about myself, I stay for 12 years, too. And again, so again, the recommendations that myself and Mr. Stack are making, we take this very seriously, we're looking at the condition, the conditions that are there now, what we're facing, and who is best suited to, to move it forward and deal with the issues that need to be dealt with.
Any further discussion?
And again, this is, I think it's important to remind my colleagues here that, you know, we should be judged upon whom we appoint, not who we do not appoint. We have good candidates all across the board here. And we should be
I'd love to see a female jump in on that, too.
I, listen, I've been looking for it for years, as liaison.
Both more than one female, actually.
I don't disagree.
All right. So, Mr. O, Mr. Wallner, motion. Mr. O'Leary, second. Mr. O'Leary, we'll just start the voting. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Hagerty and Mr. Heron.
Mr. Wallner.
Mr. Hagerty and Mr. Heron.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Mr. Hagerty and Mr. Heron.
And Manu Kelly is Hagerty. Mr. Hagerty and Mr. Heron.
Thank my colleagues, thank you.
Historical Commission. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Historical Commission for terms to expire on December 31, 2025. There's one opening and two names. Stone, Stone Jaycee, who's the incumbent, and Andrew Chris.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner?
Yep, in discussion with Chris Hayden, who's the Chair, he'd like Stone Jaycee to, again, be moved as the incumbent. That would be his recommendation, and I agree with that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Stone Jaycee.
Mr. Wallner?
Stone Jaycee.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Stone Jaycee, and he has a very cool name.
And Manu Kelly is Stone Jaycee.
Library Trustees. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment, appointment as member to the Library Trustees as for the terms to expire on December 31, 2025. There's three openings and three names. Catherine Geoffren, Skinnell, Margot Chomp, and Frank Belcom. Second?
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mrs. Skinnell sent an email, she's the Chair. What she'd like to do is have Mrs. Chomp appointed to a term. She was an associate. She would like her to be a serving trustee, and Mrs. Skinnell obviously is interested in reappointment, which I would be totally in agreement. The third individual she was not able to reach. So, at this point, we'd just be making the recommendation to nominate Mrs. Skinnell and Mrs. Chomp based on Mrs. Skinnell's recommendation.
So, we're just going to come back on Frank once he gets
Probably, yes, just to make sure he's still interested and
Yeah, again, he, he was a former member of the Finance Committee for a number of years.
Yeah, I know that name.
It's holidays and people are, you know, not, some people are taking, sick and out of commission. Hopefully, that's not the case, but we, just to make sure that he's still interested. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Catherine Jeffrey and Skinnell and Margot Chomp.
Mr. Wallner?
Catherine Jeffrey and Skinnell and Margot Chomp.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Catherine Jeffrey and Skinnell and Margot Chomp.
And Manu Kelly is Catherine Jeffrey and Skinnell and Margot Chomp.
Okay. Martin's Pond Study Committee. Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Martin's Pond Study Committee for terms to expire on December 31, 2025. There's four openings and five names. James Greer, who's here tonight, Daniel Schoop, an incumbent, Lawrence Succi, who is also an incumbent, Samantha Mear, as a full member, and then Steve Correll Jr.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary, and we'll hear from Mr. Wallner.
Yeah.
Is that Steve Correll that was in another, so he just wants to serve on the board of the Mission? That's great.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but
No, it's okay.
what's your recommendation?
So, all the incumbents, James Greer, David Schoop, and Lawrence Succi, recommended. And then George, the Chair, who we met tonight, would like Samantha Mear to be the full person, and hopefully Steve Correll will find that on the board.
Okay. Any further discussion? So, we have a motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. The recommendation being Lawrence Succi, James Greer. He's a recommendation being Lawrence Succi, James Greer, Donald Scoop, and Samantha Mear. Mr. O'Leary.
James Greer, Donald Scoop, Lawrence Succi, and Samantha Mear.
Mr. Walner.
James Greer, Donald Scoop, Larry Succi, and Samantha Mear.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
James Greer, Donald Scoop, Lawrence Succi, Samantha Mear.
And then you probably is James Greer, Donald Scoop, Lawrence Succi, and Samantha Mear.
Okay, mobile home rent control board, Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination for reappointment as a member to the mobile home rent control board for term to expire on December 31, 2025. John Mannion, who's the incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, and we'll hear from Mr. O'Leary.
I would recommend to my colleagues that we reappoint Mr. Mannion. If you recall, just recently, we were looking for and calling for members to serve on the rent patrol board, and Mr. Mannion stepped forward, and we had to stagger the terms. And so his short term has expired, and now he needs to be reappointed for a full term.
Sounds good, any further discussion? Caring that, Mr. Wal, motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary.
John Mannion.
Mr. Walner.
John Mannion.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
John Mannion.
And you probably is Joan Mannion.
Okay. Reading Municipal Light Department Advisory Board Representative, Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Jason Small as the Reading Municipal Light Department Advisory Board Representative for a term to expire December 31, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
This is mine?
What's it, excuse me? Want to vote?
Was that my?
One for one, right? No, this is
I don't believe it's mine.
Oh, is it, no, I meant for the vote, I'm sorry.
Actually, it's Mr., oh, I seconded it, but
Jason Small.
So, yeah, but this is Mr. Stullos, is he recommending the reappointment?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's what I was, I thought you called on me for a recommendation going
Wait, is that mine? I've done that.
I'm sorry.
I've dropped the ball before.
I have too.
It's only nine o'clock, I'm sorry.
I dropped the ball before.
Wait, is that mine?
I'm sorry, yes, that's the recommendation, I apologize.
Okay.
I was calling for that, so if there's any, no further discussion?
I don't have the name on my motion.
It's, it's in the body, it's in the body of the motion.
Ah, okay.
Jason Small. So, motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, now we'll call the vote, Mr. O'Leary.
Jason Small.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Mr. Walner.
Jason Small.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Jason Small.
And you probably is Jason Small.
Okay, recycling committee, Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as a member to the recycling committee for an indefinite term. Five openings, one name, Deborah Pascal as a full member. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Nope, Mr. Walner.
No, it's Mr. Walner now, I used to be.
Okay, John Rogers is here, just like, can we recognize him briefly about?
That used to be mine.
Probably, which one?
You have a lot, well, you project pretty well.
You have a radio on, I was just going.
Yeah, should I start calling the game? Just wanted to say thank you, just, just a couple of words before the appointment. And just a quick update on what the recycling committee has been up to. You, you may have noticed November 1st, or the beginning of November, we launched the the pay-as-you-throw overflow bag program that you all approved earlier this year. And we did that, not a whole lot of fanfare, there was a lot going on with the, the switch over from JRM to Republic. But we did, there were, there were bill stuffers that went out in the, in the trash and water bill. There were transcript articles, I think we had one each week for four weeks in a row in the lead-up. And then after, after that, email blast, code red. We had Mr. Walner speaking at town meeting, putting, putting in a plug. We, we were at the Apple Festival, so really tried to find lots of ways to get the word out about why we were doing it and, you know, what was coming and why, why, why we thought it made sense. So we are harvesting the fruits of those labor, that, that labor. And I think it's gonna be a process, but I think you will start seeing, if you haven't already, seeing the pay-as-you-throw bags in use on, on streets near you. And just wanted to say thanks to the, the select board for approving that. To Joe Parisi, who's just been so great as DBW director and, you know, as one who has experience with this in other towns, and actually lives with it in another town, you know, lives, experiences pay-as-you-throw, and, and was, has just been instrumental in, in making this happen. And of course, the, the recycling committee, including Dan Greenberg, our colleague, who really led the efforts, was our liaison with the town to, to make this happen. So that's underway. Our next, our next, the next frontier for us is organics, thinking about composting, all the stuff that, that shouldn't, doesn't need to go in the trash, shouldn't go in the trash. Sometime soon, by law, will not be allowed in the trash, and we really want to give people options for that, educate them about, about possibilities for that. So working on, working on that next. We always need, we always need volunteers to help make this happen, so we're very happy, happy that Deborah Pascal has, has stepped forward. We have two open, two open seats, she will, she would be, she would be filling one of them, not counting our associate memberships, which we've actually never had associate members. It was a great idea, we haven't, we're still trying to live into, into that vision. But I think we will have a candidate soon for the remaining seat. And we're just, and I tell you, Deborah is passionate about this stuff. She keeps sending me notes about books she's reading on, on, on our issues, on, on trash and recycling and opportunities and needs. So very much support her coming on to the committee and would appreciate your support too.
Thank you, and thank you for your volunteer.
Well, thank you all for your service, it really, I, I do understand that this whole town is run not just by our, our staff, but, but by the volunteers, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, all right. All set, any further discussion? Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary.
Deborah Pascal.
Mr. Walner.
Deborah Pascal.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Deborah Pascal.
And then you probably is Deborah Pascal, thank you.
Terrific, thank you very much, and thanks to the town administrator for, for making all that implementation possible too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State Ethics Liaison, Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Susan Duplin as the State Ethics Commission Liaison for a term to expire on December 31, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary, a vote on this.
Susan Duplin.
Mr. Walner.
Susan Duplin.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Susan Duplin.
And you probably Susan Duplin.
Tax Aid Committee, Madam Chair, I move to reappoint the following individuals to the Tax Aid Committee for terms to expire on December 31, 2025. Debbie Carbone, Assessor, Mary Ann McKay, Treasurer.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. I'll call for a vote unless you have anything you want to add, Mr. Wal, Mr. O'Leary, vote, let's vote.
Debbie Carbone and Mary Ann McKay.
Mr. Walner.
Debbie Carbone and Mary Ann McKay.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Debbie Carbone, Mary Ann McKay.
And then you probably Debbie Carbone and Mary Ann McKay.
Town Treasurer, Madam Chair, I move to reappoint Mary Ann McKay as Town Treasurer for a term to expire on December 31, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary.
Mary Ann McKay.
Mr. Walner.
Mary Ann McKay.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Mary Ann McKay.
And then you probably is Mary Ann McKay.
And then Youth Services Committee, Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment, appointment to the Youth Services Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2025. There's five openings and two names. Peter McJane, who's the incumbent, and Beatrice Roden, who's also incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mrs. Gonzalez.
That's not mine.
It's rich.
Oh, it isn't, it, it has a switch.
Yeah, that was a switch too.
That's something I should know, but
That's okay, it got mixed up in the Excel file.
I have it.
It depends which one you look at, the Excel file she sent out is
The old one.
What's your recommendation?
Mr. O'Leary.
So the recommendation is Peter McJane and Beatrice Roden. And we need more people, and we have a new, you know, a new leader on board, and it's kind of like, almost starting, as I learned today, because the meetings people are meeting. You know, because of the pandemic, a lot of things that were organized before, I don't want to say lapsed, but, you know, the previous director did a great job of keeping things going in a Zoom environment, we're back to live. And so it's like, almost started over again, so
So your two recommendations are?
Peter McJane and Beatrice Roden.
Peter McJane and Beatrice?
Beatrice Roden, both incumbents.
And are we, how many other openings?
There's three more openings.
In addition to these two?
Yes.
Is Peter still the chair?
Yes, to be voted on, I think, I, they voted on maybe the last
Yes, so he was reappointed.
What's that?
He was reappointed.
He does a good job.
Landslide, but probably a landslide election.
Yeah, probably.
He does a very good job.
Yeah, he does do a good job.
He's still the chair. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Walner, a second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary.
Peter McJane, Beatrice Roden.
Mr. Walner.
Peter McJane, Beatrice Roden.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Peter McJane, Beatrice Roden.
And then you probably Peter McJane and Beatrice Roden. So we really need to try to generate some, especially because we have new public services and new youth services, and that committee is really support staff, that, that's a volunteer group that supports staff for those youth services efforts. Ever there was a time, we need to actively pursue, I think, or recruit people to try to step, step in on that. Especially if we have, I don't know what other things Mr. Corial signed up for, but if he signed up just for any of these, we should really consider reaching out and seeing if he'd be willing to do some of these other ones that have openings or even associate openings, you know. Any other appointments that we're in?
Nope, we're onto the victory.
Okay.
Victory.
We're moving on to the next order of business, which is licensing.
Yeah, so license renewals, Madam Chair, I move to, to renew the following common victory, how do you pronounce it?
Victular.
Victular.
Victure.
Victular.
License to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Here we go. Dunkin' Donuts, North Reading Main Operation LLC, Dunkin' Donuts, Shawna Donuts Incorporated, The Hornet's Nest, Captain's Pizza, The Lobster Claw Seafoods Incorporated, Andrea's House of Pizza, Young Yon Bros. Incorporated, also known as Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts, Holy Donut LLC, Four Pats LLC, doing business as Subway of North Reading Incorporated, Wayama Group LLC, doing business as Mario's Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, Jim's Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Joe's Fish Seafood Restaurant, PH Wealth Incorporated, doing business as China Cuisine Incorporated, Molly's Store Incorporated, doing business as Ryer's Store, Beyond Bagels Incorporated, Wendy's, Subvarnish LLC, doing business as Subway, McDonald's, Nan Center Cafe, Gary Queen, To The Dogs Restaurant Management, doing business as Sports Spirits and Steaks, and Edgemore Sons Incorporated, doing business as Next Place.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Is it supposed to be roll call because of the hybrid? Oh, no.
Well, no, he's not joining us. Mr. Stullos is in on.
No, I just, no.
I think it's better if it's virtual only, we've done a roll call.
If a member is joining virtually, a member of our public, public buying, then we'd have to roll call, but
Even if only one member, right, Madam Chair?
Sure. We're just broadcasting virtual, but if one of us hasn't joined virtually, we need to roll call.
Like Mr. Walner, when he was a parent from, what was that, Florida?
Right, when he joined us, right, then to do a roll call.
All right, Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common victory license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Starbucks Coffee, 19845, Dos Lobos LLC, doing business as
I have to interrupt you, I apologize for interrupting you, but I should have paid attention to you waving, but Mrs. McNeil's waving, I'm going to recuse, recuse myself as well as turn the chair over to you, Mr. Walner, on this vote due to family members with the working employee that is one or more established.
One or more.
Okay, so manage
I'll be abstaining from the vote.
I move to renew the following common victory license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Starbucks Coffee, number 19845, Dos Lobos LLC, doing business as Apothecary Ale Brewery and Kitchen, BNR North Reading LLC, doing business as, as far as your lounge, Kylie's Coffee, doing business as Heavenly's Donuts, Grill 19 Yaber Group LLC, doing business as Teresa's Prime Grill 19.
Second.
So motion by Rich Walner, second by Steve O'Leary. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Nope, it's the lead opposed and then abstain.
Sorry.
We have an abstain.
Oh, and we have
One abstain.
One absence, one abstain.
Got it. That's what she said. Common victory alert, all alcohol, Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common victory alert, all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Young Yon Brothers Incorporated, doing business as Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge Incorporated, PH Wealth Incorporated, doing business as China Cuisine Incorporated, Jim's Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Joe's Fish Seafood Restaurant, To The Dogs Restaurant Management, doing business as Sports Spirits and Steaks, and Wayama Group LLC, doing business as Mario's Restaurant.
Second.
Because she's back on.
Okay.
You can participate if you want.
Yes, I can, and I just wanted, Mrs. Ms. Mallon is, Ms. Mallon joined us, and she, I guess at the CIT meeting, I'm just kind of bringing this up right now, there was discussion with regard to these renewals of these license holders and ensuring that they had complied with the TIPS training. So I just want to make sure that all of these, we're renewing under the assumption that they have complied and provided their completion or certification that's required under the rule. Are any of these dealing with with regard to the TIPS certification, Mr. Gilberto?
There's one who at the end, we're going to recommend that you vote to instruct us to hold it in the office until they provide us a documentation on it. And there are actually, it's either four or five that we're going to ask for that direction, but one of them is related specifically to the issue of compliance with the TIPS requirement. There are a couple of issues that are going on with the TIPS requirement. One is people who have been trained, for who we have a record that they've been trained, but they've not been issued a card by the training company, so they're supposed to have the card on them. And then the second issue is people for who have claimed to have been trained, but we can't find that secondary documentation, that's the group. And it's one establishment, I'm just standing at this point in time for that reason, that we're going to recommend that we hold it, that it is Kitty's, there's a later motion that directs not just for Kitty's, but for other reasons that we hold those licenses. So that's the way we're going to handle it, that's the way we've handled them in the past with this, so as to not create a situation where they don't have a license. If they don't, provide us some proof in some form, electronic or otherwise, by December 30, then they won't have a license when they come to open on January 1st. But we're optimistic that everybody will comply.
So Michael, in the grouping, Mr. Gilberto, in the grouping that was just the subject of the motion, they're all, they have all provided the documentation that's required.
Kitty says not, but there is a separate motion at the end where we're gonna be, we're asked to be held, that it be held in the office until they provide it.
I would make a, see if my colleagues would amend the, amend the motion to not include Kitty's in this grouping of establishments, if they're not complying. Mr. Walner?
The only problem I see with that is we're not going to get together, we're we've had a meeting for years, so they wouldn't be able to have a renewed license.
But then I, but we, what we could do is vote, we're discussing Kitty specifically, we could vote to non-renew Kitty's unless they produce the documentation that's required.
That's what you requested.
Versus voting to renew it, contingent upon them bringing forward whatever they're required to bring forward, which they, is a regular role and requirement that they're aware of. So
Whatever, however.
It's up to the pleasure of the board, obviously, I'm one out of four, but
Yeah, my question was not necessarily for, you know, a one or any, it's just that, you know, we've put so much stock into the amount of work that we do on it, it's just wondering that, especially in all the alcohol ones, if we just, you know, because one is, if the TA knows and everybody has a clean record on it, on the different things, fine, but if, you know, we know that there are certain ones along the way that on the different things, fine, but if, you know, we know that there are certain ones along the way that historically might not get things in on time, that we just have some kind of plan. So I mean, if you've tracked, tracked away what in particular, that's fine. It's just, just kind of bringing the, what we've discussed in our last CIT meeting, when we talked about it, that we vote the alcoholic marks, et cetera. You know, responsible for what this goes to.
Thank you. Thank you for, for bringing that forward. I'm comfortable.
This is a new thing, though. We, we have, they have renewals every year. They have to get the renewal in. They have this requirement every year. I don't remember Kitty's being non-compliant prior to this, but they certainly know that, and we're coming up on a holiday season, a busy season. That place is always packed, so it should be a pretty, you know, front and center concern. If they can't find a card, pay your staff, take the, take the two-hour course again. They did that? So where's the, where's the rest of the?
It was with the company that they didn't get them the cards in time for us to have them tonight.
So it's not necessarily them's fault?
Okay.
The cards came in today?
Okay, so then they're compliant then, if they have.
Do they drop?
I just have one person that wasn't in the, the in the packet that was dropped off at my desk after I left. So she's giving that one to me tomorrow. So as of tomorrow, they will be compliant.
Okay. All right.
Okay. But there's no other ones that have that issue? You said five, right?
There are five. There are other issues. So Teresa's has an issue of somebody who will expire.
I can't discuss Teresa's though. I should recuse myself because I, I was, I'm sorry that I drew my attention away, but I didn't think, I thought we were separating out the ones that I could not vote on.
I believe it is separated. It's not in this motion. So we can, we can, we'll talk about it separately.
I can't discuss that. I would have to even recuse myself from discussing that at all, but.
There are no others in this grouping.
So, motion. Mr. O'Leary?
I just believe that what the town administrator, from an administrative standpoint, is proposing, works for everybody.
Okay. Well, it sounds like they're compliant.
December 31st, come January 1st, if they're not compliant, they're not going to be issued their license. If it's not hanging on the wall, they can't share an alcohol.
But it sounds like they resolved it, will be by tomorrow. And you don't have any doubt about that, right, Mrs. McNeil? Okay. And she's the one that's gathering these, this information, so. Let's move on with the motion. Mr. Walner's motion, seconded by Mr. O'Leary.
Yep.
One I can vote on. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's four in favor.
Now you can't do this one.
I'm going to recuse myself from the chair and turn the chair over to Mr. Walner.
I'll make the motion for you, so you can have your undivided attention chairing the meeting.
There we go.
Mister Chair, I move to renew the following common victory, all alcohol licenses to expire December 31, 2003, subject to all regulatory department requirements. BNR North Reading LLC, DBA Horseshoe Lounge, Dos Lobos LLC, DBA Hypothecary Ales Brewery and Kitchen, Grill 19 Yever Group LLC, DBA Teresa's Prime Grill 19.
Second.
Mister Clerk?
Discussion.
So, related situation with Teresa's. They have one employee whose card will be expiring, has not yet expired, but will be expiring. They have not provided it. Again, for the same reason, my recommendation is we hold the license in the office until they produce it. That won't be until after the expiration occurs, but it'll be before the end of the year. So, related situation, not quite exactly the same.
Okay.
We are told that the course has been, similar to Kitty's, we've been told that the course has been taken and passed, but we don't have any documentation of that.
So I'm comfortable with that, that it gets held until the documentation is given.
Are there any other issues with the other two?
No.
Okay.
Nope, all set. Thank you, Mister.
All right. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
So one absent and one refused. Okay, general on-premises, all alcohol. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following general on-premises, all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Ultra Sheek Events LLC, doing businesses Ultra Sheek Events at a Hillview, Country Club. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I mean, four in favor, one in.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common victory, wine and malt beverages to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Wayama Group LLC, doing businesses Mario's Restaurant. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Well, they're in compliance. Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class one license.
Mister Clerk, Madam Chair, I would like to recuse myself from the class one license and class two licenses, because I have a family member who currently holds a class two license and will be seeking the reissuance of that. Class one license holders also have the same privileges as a class two, which is used car vehicles. So therefore, I will not be participating in the discussion, nor will I be voting on the matter, of class one or class two.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the, the following class one license to expire January 1, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Dushak, doing business as National Sales, Melconian Subaru, Robcat of Boston, and North Reading Motorsports.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class two license to expire January 1, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Honka Motor Vehicle Sales LLC, Nika Incorporated, doing business as Route 28 Motors, Brian Dushak, doing business as National Sales, A&amp;J Motors Incorporated, TNT Auto Sales Incorporated.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Class three license. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class three license to expire January 1, 2024, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Dushak, doing business as National Sales.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Andrea's House of Pizza, Cowabunga's Entertainment, Loyal Order of Moose, Kitty's Restaurant and Lounge, To The Dogs Restaurant Management, doing business as Sports Spirits and Steaks. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you accusing?
I'm going to turn, recuse.
I'll make the motion for you again, Mister, Mister Clerk.
You got it.
Mister Clerk, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device licenses to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Dos Lobos LLC, DBA Hypothecary Ales Brewery and Kitchen.
Second.
Motion by Steve O'Leary, seconded by Leana Gonzalez. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So three, four, one absent, one refused. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following fraternal club alcohol license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Loyal Order of Moose. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package store, all alcohol license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. 211 Bull's Sheen Corp., doing business as Eastgate Liquors, Paradise R2 Incorporated, doing business as New England Beverage and Redemption, One Stop Liquor Corporation. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
I guess the same discussion we had about the restaurants. Is everybody in compliance there?
No issues. All right.
No, not among these.
Congratulations to Mrs. McNeil for, for herding all the cats.
Any further, any further discussion?
And dogs.
And dogs.
All those, okay, the motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following package store, wine and malt beverage license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Devench Inc. doing business as Christopher's Market, RSS Convenience Incorporated, doing business as Convenient Plus, Joe's Quick Mart's Mass LLC, doing business as Joe's Quick Mart's Number 514, Molly's Store Incorporated, doing business as Ryer's Store, and Aria and Julie Incorporated, doing business as Route 28 Lucky Mart. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Say what's, say, everybody's in compliance?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mrs. Gonzalez, yes.
Yes.
All set. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following jukebox license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Loyal Order of Moose. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following Sunday Entertainment license to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Ultra Sheek Events LLC, doing business as Ultra Sheek Events at a Hillview, Country Club. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to renew.
You're going to?
Oh, yeah.
You have to recuse yourself, Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm going to turn the chair over to Mr. Walner.
All right, Jen, we have the, the chair is recusing herself on this one?
Yes.
Mr. Walner, I move to renew the following Sunday Entertainment licenses to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Dos Lobos LLC, DBA Hypothecary Ales Brewery and Kitchen, Grill 19 Yever Group LLC, doing business as Teresa's Prime Grill 19.
Second.
Motion by Steve O'Leary, seconded by Leana Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then one absent and one refused. Madam Chair, I move the following license to be held in the office of Town Administrator until licensee is met satisfactory, complying with all issues with all regulatory departments. A&amp;J Motors, Building Department, Cowabunga's Entertainment LLC.
Excuse me, one second, I don't see.
I don't know A&amp;J Motors.
I don't see A&amp;J Motors. You must have a previous version. A&amp;J Motors is off, off of the naughty list.
You're wrong. I got the one you printed out. Is it just?
It's the Santa's naughty list?
Sorry. So, Cowabunga's Entertainment LLC, for the Building Department, Duncan 6, Washington Street, Building Department, Heavenly Donuts, Building Department and Finance, Kitty's Alcohol Compliance, and Teresa's Alcohol Compliance and Finance.
Second.
And Madam Chair's in charge of this. This is yours, right?
Yep.
You're not accused from this one.
Heavenly?
No, she can't. She is actually.
Oh, she is. Okay.
Sorry.
Is that, all right, so.
I can't, I, I apologize. I'm looking, I've been scrolling through and I can't find the motions in the packet to, to be able to know ahead of time.
There was a separate email that was sent to you.
That's okay. I don't know.
And I, I.
But Heavenly's on this one, so.
I came right from the words to here, so I can check my.
Heavenly and Teresa's.
That's okay.
Because of Heavenly and Teresa's, she can't.
Okay, so motion by me, seconded by who is it? Second?
Second.
So me? Sorry, jumped in on your spot there, Steve.
That's all.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One absent, one refused. Madam Chair, I move to approve and sign the ABCC 2023 Renewal Certification. Second.
Motion by Ms. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve and sign the ABCC certification to correct the addresses of the Loyal Order of Moose. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to confirm the following positions as having special municipal, municipal employee status pursuant to NGL Chapter 268A. Parks and Rec, Infant Toddler Instructor, After School Instructor/Coach, Summer Program Instructor/Coach, Summer Program Director, Summer Program Assistant Director, Summer Counselor, Police Matron, Crossing Guard, Counseling and Agent, Van Driver, Program Coordinator, Finance Committee Recording Secretary, Police Department Co-Facilitators for the Youth Action Team, Library, Substitute Library Technician, Board of Health, Public Health Nurse. Second.
That last one can be struck from the motion. That shouldn't have been, shouldn't have been in there.
Okay. So strength of public health nurse.
She's not in there. Sorry. Oh, no, she is still training with Pam. I apologize. So we should leave that.
Okay, leave it in. Madam Chair, is she recusing herself?
A motion by?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you, okay, I thought you were a noob about it.
There's a lot of dialogue going on here, so I'm trying to understand what's happening. All right, motion by Mr. Walner. There's a second by Mr. O'Leary. There's an explanation needed for why so many of these positions require this very, very special designation that we should not be doling out like candy kisses. So we need to know why there's a need for this. Particularly the summer programs, which I know that there's, it's difficult to get people to come to, you know, maybe take a job, a part-time job, a seasonal job. But Mr. Walner suggested it early. We have a ton of youth that might be interested in those, that might, we might not necessarily have to. Obviously, the van driver wouldn't be eligible, but, you know, that might be able to help out with some of these programs and positions. So can you explain the, why the need for us to make so many of these designations over and over and over again?
So with the exception of two of the positions, the Finance Committee Recording Secretary and the Public Health Nurse, these positions are all fairly transient positions that vary seasonally from year to year. The number of people that we need for the positions vary depending upon, in particular Parks and Recreation, the enrollment in those programs, what hiring is like outside of the town's operation. I can tell you that Mr. Collins and I have been insistent that all of these positions are widely advertised on the town's website, not just within the particular department or the area being served in order to draw as many candidates as possible. Based on his work and his discussions with all of the departments involved, the recommendation is to continue with each of these positions designated for this, because we tend to get, for example, in the case of Parks and Recreation, employees of the school department who are not working during the summer and are able to assist. In the case of the Crossing Guard and Matrons, we often have folks who might be an election worker who are standing into that position. The Council on Aging, similarly, we often have folks who are crossing over into other part-time work. They may be retirees, but they're working for us in another capacity. Excuse me. The Substitute Library Technician, that is also one that's been fairly transient. We have a lot of people who come and go. It's by no means ideal. It's not the, the system that we want to, want to be running, but what I have found in my eight years here is that often we are left with few options in the hiring, which is what's brought us to seek for this approval in advance rather than having to scramble when we're doing the hiring, in the case of Parks and Recreation in February and March.
I appreciate that. I really do think we need to actively recruit beyond posting it on our website. I'll be honest, I don't look at our website very often, so I'm not sure that people that are looking for work would naturally be inclined to look on the website far, but I, I'd like to see us actively recruit, get some interest stirred up in municipal service by maybe recruiting some of the kids in the youth program. I, I, I think it's a good opportunity for us to kind of sow some of these different, you know, factions together, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I don't think we should just keep doing this over and over again because, you know, they're having a hard time recruiting in February for summer stuff. I don't know.
How related are they to the departments?
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just speaking my mind about doing this annually and not doing something differently to try to recruit to fill. Because I know there are a lot of children and youth, not kids, but there are a lot of young people looking for work and looking for local work. So I think some of these are perfect opportunities for them. I'd like to see us do some more, you know, more recruiting of younger people in high school to be able. school to be able to serve in these roles.
I'll relay that, thank you.
Or even college, even college students coming home for the summer.
That's right, college students. When they get to know the people in the community in that capacity, maybe they will think to apply for another open spot here because they're a resident, they actually have made some of that networking that makes it important for them to think about it. So, that's just my two cents. All right, I'm sorry, there is a motion.
I wholeheartedly concur with you, and I think they should be coordinating with the school department as far as job opportunities, particularly summer job opportunities for, you know, high school students and seniors graduating. And again, as that transpires, then they become familiar with, as they're in college, translates also.
Definitely.
The school has the, you know, they have an email address for everybody in the whole school, so you can get that worked out really quick. And Parks and Rec has a huge mail list of their own.
Yes.
So, I mean, I'd be advertising to my constituents, you know, because there'd be people who'd be interested.
Right.
At least if you took care of a block of that, that would help out.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Walner, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. We're under legal bills. Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for October 2022 in the amount of $6,737.37.
Madam Chair, I think we missed one item.
Oh, did I skip something?
The upcoming meeting schedule?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
That was a Freudian slip there. We have to do this.
We just knock off legal bills and then come back with it.
We should talk about the schedule. Which, Mr. Gilberto, I think you put on one of the pages of our-
Okay, page four of the main packet, the agenda notes.
Yes.
I identified proposed dates for meetings through the town meeting. Well, the proposed, the likely town meeting.
Can we review this?
What page?
Page four of the meeting packet, so it's not the motions that we were just working off of, it's the actual meeting packet.
Ninth, the ninth and the 23rd of January. I'll just read them out loud.
Sure.
February 9th and 27th, March 11th is our Saturday budget hearing that we have annually. March 13th is the budget hearing, and 27th, March 13th to 27th are our budget hearings. April 10th and 24th, our potential town budget hearings. We'll be receiving the CIPC report on capital projects. May 3rd is our select voter reorganizational meeting after the election. May 8th is the meeting that we sign, sign the town meeting warrant to go out to print and publication, and the 22nd is the town meeting informational hearings that we've been holding in advance of town meeting. We don't have one of our members here, so I know this would be tentative, but are there any issues, Mr. O'Leary?
I believe that I'm going to be out of town, out of state, March 7th through the 14th, 7th through the 14th, but-
Okay. That's, that's going to be two, 11, right? 11 and 13?
Yes.
Is there a workaround for that that works with this schedule? Because we need to at that point, I think. Not that we, not that you'd want to, you know, we do, it would, it would be-
March 11th?
You don't want to miss that, do you, Mr. O'Leary?
I do not, but that's okay, you know? If, if it's necessary, that's okay. I can, I'm a quick study on some of this stuff.
Yes.
I think I could pick up on whatever was discussed. And if there's any bones of contention in relation to what should be recommended during the budget for specific departments, I can always weigh in.
Sounds good.
There will be opportunities for me.
All right, sounds good.
February 9th is a Thursday?
It is a Thursday. It also happens to be my wedding anniversary, so you're on your own, people.
Your husband is invited.
I work on Thursday, Tuesdays, so.
Should have said the 13th, February 13th and February 27th.
That's better.
Yeah.
February 13th, okay. And I will be away the 23rd, so, no, I'm sorry, I'm wrong about that.
In February?
Potentially, never mind. I'm sorry about that.
Unavoidable, but can't change that first week in May, but I won't be here for the reorg without town meeting warrant. I'll be away.
So, the 30th and the 8th?
I believe so. Let me see if I can tweak this or I have to.
Okay. And we really don't, in chance of Mr. Sudo's not here, so.
We could discuss it further at the next meeting and try to find something.
At least if the members could at least mark your, mark your calendar as best we can, and then if, we tentatively would schedule this, and then if it becomes a real problem, I, I think we should, flexibility's in order, and we maybe would be able to work around it, but-
So, what date are we, we're talking the 9th and the 23rd of January?
January 9th, January 23rd.
Yeah.
February 13th.
13.
27.
And 27th. March 11th is a Saturday, March 13th is the Monday, and March 27th, those are all our budget hearings. So, you'll hit one of those at least, Mr. O'Leary.
Well, save the good stuff.
And the last. Right. And you already pretty much are up to speed on public safety. So, April 10th and 24th are our, they'll be the one we hear from CIPC. May 3rd is the reorg, May 8th is the signing of the warrant, and the 22nd is our proposed informational hearings. Okay.
So, did I hear that Mr. O'Leary cannot do March 7th to the 14th?
Correct.
And Mrs. Gonzalez cannot do, is it May 3rd through the-
Yeah, I'm not sure about the 3rd. I have to double check that, but I think definitely the-
If you could just let us know, and then I'll try to come back with something that reflects all that if we can.
And maybe not May 8th, you said, I think, right?
The 8th, I think, I'll definitely be away. The 3rd, I, I'm not sure, I might be here. I can double check it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so at least we have it tentatively squared away, and we'll be flexible with that if any of these become a, you know, significant problem. The good thing is with the big snowstorm, we can still meet virtually.
Yay. Unless there's no electricity.
Yeah, that's true. All right, now next order.
Excuse me, what was your anniversary again?
February 9th.
Why, you wanted to send her some flowers?
Oh, yeah. Well, so that's already been changed. We're good.
That's right, 13th, yeah. It was a beautiful, beautiful sunny February day.
Boy, you are daring.
The sun was out.
Here, was it around here?
And, no, it was in Walden. I mean, the sun was out everywhere, yes.
Yeah. But the sun particularly shone very brightly in a day in Walden.
Destination.
No, those didn't exist back then. That's new.
And what a catch I snagged, let me tell you something. So, anyway, all right, let's move on to legal bills.
All right, legal bills.
You did start this motion, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for October 2022 in the amount of $6,737.37 as follows. General, $6,139.87. Labor, $607.50, for a total of $6,737.37. Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Can I, can we? I know that we really want to do this, but I did, I did talk to Mr. Sudo. Maybe we just give people a little bit more chance to read through the bulk of minutes to the next meeting, that way, just in case, because I think he wants to be able to review and read in case there's anything that, in the unlikely event, it needs to be modified. Can we skip over? It's up to my colleagues.
As long as, as long as you don't, I don't have to redo what I did two months ago, whatever it was, okay?
No, just as long as we don't get ourselves in trouble with, I mean, we're a year delinquent on some of these.
There are recordings as well as draft minutes, so if there would be a request, those are actually completed, and it's a matter of us having taken the time to make sure that, you know, we have a chance to review and review them. So, not for any lack of effort.
We're all in it together.
Yeah.
This is true. All right, and now we're going on to the next order of business, which is to hear the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to move quickly through my report. First, I did provide the board with copies of information that was recently reviewed with the financial planning team, including revenue to date reports for the current fiscal year, the current fiscal year's tax rate recapitulation. Tax rate was approved in the beginning of December by the Department of Revenue, as well as a fiscal year 2024 draft budget schedule that we will merge with the board's meeting schedule once that's all finalized. The last select, I mean, there was some discussion of state funding for intersection work. The reference funding is included in a state transportation bond bill, and although it's earmarked for the town of North Reading, the funding's not available to the town until it's been released by the state administration. So, I know there was some question about what's going on with those earmarks. There were actually four earmarks that were out there for intersections at Central and Park, Central and North, Chestnut and Havre, which also has a separate town appropriation from June Town Meeting, and then there was $500,000 for road rehabilitation and reconstruction for the town of North Reading. As I've said before, and from my conversations with our legislative delegation, just because they're earmarked in this budget, it doesn't mean that they'll be released from this budget. Sometimes we get directed to other funding sources that fulfill the obligation that's called out here, so I don't want folks to feel like, God, it's never going to happen. There's been any number of times where Representative Jones has said, yeah, I know the money was in this bucket, but this, this money can be available in another way. So, we'll continue to work with him about getting that funding released. As was mentioned earlier, you know, we're still going through some transition in our trash recycling collection program. We've had soft enforcement of the pay-as-you-throw program, but it's getting more and more, becoming more and more common knowledge that it's out there and that the bags can be purchased. I will just note that there's going to be some change in the, in the pickup schedule because of the upcoming holidays. One-day delays for the weeks of December 26th and January 2nd, meaning if you were the Monday, you'll be collected on Tuesday. If you were the Tuesday, it'd be the Wednesday. If you had Wednesday, it'd be Thursday. Thursday would be Friday. Friday would go with the Saturday. Holiday tree collection, I have it there, January 7th. It actually hasn't been confirmed by the contractor yet, and once it is, we'll get it out there. And trees would need to be curbside by 6:30 a.m., free of any decorations and not bagged. Real estate tax bills will be arriving over the coming weeks, and those will incorporate the new valuations that were effective this year. Some residents know there is an ability to file a payment request, and they are due in the month of February. Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, which operates the Ring and Ride Transportation Program for seniors and disabled veterans for out-of-town medical appointments, they are rebranding it as, called, what they're calling MIVA, and while it hasn't been formally implemented, they are looking to make changes to the routes that they service, most specifically the routes that are outside their service area. So, right now, they are taking folks from North Reading to the south into the area that's currently serviced by the ride. They're proposing to phase that aspect of their service out. The Public Services Director has been looking to try to partner with them to obtain some grant funding that would allow us to potentially fill the need on that with something that would be run either by the town or by something overseen by the town. It's a bit unique for our involvement in transportation, but I think it is building on the conversations that we've been having about transportation, and so we are seeking $100,000 in Community Connection Grant Funding from the Boston MPO over the next couple of years to help with this transition. So, we'll keep everyone posted on that. It won't be the only avenue we look to resolve that, but I do want to make folks aware that, you know, we had a sort of, an à la carte type program that we had worked out with MVRTA that will be changing, and that's mostly due to they're looking to consolidate to maintain service within their service area. And I will be honest, we did know that we had something kind of unique when we were able to have offer rides into the area served by the MVRTA. I mean, that was very unique to have that for the period of time that we had it, but it does look like there's going to be changes coming, and so, you know, we're, we're working with MVRTA to try to understand how we, what those changes will be and how we can react to them.
Did we have a contract with them, Leanne?
We have, I'm going to hesitate to call it a contract, and I'm going to hesitate to say that they have, you know, a legal obligation with regard to it, particularly because of the service outside of their service area. But that's something that we've had, there's been a number of conversations already. I know Rich has, you know, been part of some of those conversations. I know Ms. Hartman has attended some meetings of the MVRTA and had some conversation on that as well. We sort of tried the advocacy route with other members of the MVRTA, but we're not really getting a lot of traction in that. A, because it's mostly the larger communities that dominate the decision-making for the MVRTA, and B, because I think we're one of the few that are sort of the border community where we're now looking outside of their service area to provide service. So, those have been some obstacles to this, but Lilian, with, working with Mr. Walner and with folks over at the senior center, we are looking to try to, you know, figure out how can we respond to this potential change, and what can we do to fill in the gap. And I think there are options, which is certainly good news for us, and it, you know, it may, it may be that it becomes something that is incorporated into our budget process, too. I mean, that may be a need as well.
Just a question, comment, a question. First of all, we're grateful to have been included, you know, the last several years. My question is, how much has been utilized? Do we have data on that?
We do, and Lilian's actually stayed this evening, so she can probably respond to that better than I can, but that's all right, Madam Chair?
It's in your, it's actually in the report.
Was it?
186 one-way trips as of September 30th, 63 of those will continue to qualify.
I didn't see that.
The remaining 123 trips they completed will need alternate ride options.
186, that's for what time period? I'm sorry.
Through September 30th, I believe, right? Year, year-to-date through September 30th, is my understanding.
So.
That's pretty good.
It's getting used.
It's more than I anticipated, which is-
For you, yes, for a number of rides you need, yes.
Yeah. And this is a program through you, Madam Chair. The rollout has been, you know, was challenging. I mean, we got the program up and running, then COVID happened, and it was not being offered, and then it was not being utilized very much, and it sort of was just starting to get built back. And so, their new executive director, I think, is trying to determine, okay, as things are being built back, what's the right way to build it back?
It's an important one, because it's otherwise isolated people that are able to avail themselves of this, and just guess them out, get them out, they're home to where they need to go.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on that? Mr. Gilberto, were you all set with your report?
Two other items. The first is that there will be free vision and hearing tests offered by the Lions Club of Reading at our senior center on Thursday, January 19th, from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. It's something where you do need to sign up in advance by January, Friday, January 13th. I'm told it's open to folks of all ages. We're certainly targeting the senior population, but it's open to folks of all ages. If you have, want, looking to make a reservation, have a question, or if you need a ride, call the senior center at 978-664-5600. And then my final comment this evening is just that the North Reading Police Department today put out a press release warning folks, in particular seniors, with regard to the prevalence of scams and other things that are out there trying to take advantage of residents of all ages. There's a pretty well-known one that some may not have come in contact with yet with regard to a claim that a grandchild is in trouble and needs money, and that's one we're really trying to warn folks about. But I think all five of us here at the table and Mrs. McNeil have all been approached in some avenue electronically with something that is a scam or is fraudulent, and, you know, even the best of our diligence, sometimes you get, you get caught in it. So, you know, I just, I want to recognize the work of the chief and the police department in trying to be vigilant during a time when the instinct is to give this time of year and, you know, to make folks aware that these scams are out there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Walner? All right, so we can move on to, let's do board member reports and old and new business. Mr. O'Leary?
Again, the wastewater subcommittee meeting again Wednesday, Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning.
I guess, you know, to go over in detail some more proposals in relation to the finance. Again, the dollar amount of the project hasn't changed. It isn't going to change, it's just a question of how it's going to be allocated and through and to whom. So, we're working very hard on that to see if any of the numbers can fall into place which would be more acceptable and palatable to people in the community. which would be more acceptable and palatable to people in the community. And we will be reporting back next month to you on that. That's where your football team, the Super Bowl champs, first time ever.
Yay!
First time the Hornets have done it. And congratulations to the team and the coaching staff and the student body there for being so supportive and, you know, one of the most memorable football games, probably high school games ever. Talk about keeping you on edge. Wasn't quite like the Patriots, you know, none of that. But anyway, unbelievable what they've done. All their hard work has paid off, and we're very proud of them. We're also very proud of, again, the mascot program and all that they're doing and putting on the shows and educating the community and honing their skills also, and many of the students move on to higher levels of entertainment, and that's terrific. And other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday, holiday season, and we'll be seeing everybody next year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, two things. One is, did our second annual Northern Lighting last night in Alcalman. Thanks to the fire department for coming down and illuminating it while we were doing that. We had about 50, 60 people show up, and it was a good event. So, and the fire department also brought gels, you know what gels is? They brought gels, which is the chocolate coins that you use when you play dreidel. So anyways, it was a good event, so thanks to the fire department. I wanted to bring the attention of the board. The council on disability, sorry, the committee on disability was approached by the locational school that's going to be built in Wakefield. And they, to recruit that approach, this is a grassroots kind of parents-aware group, and they're alarming us about what the site plan is looking like. And so I'm just in a hard top because I don't know how else to look this up, but there's a lot of issues with us, and in the audience was not only the Commission on Disabilities, but also Jerry Noel was there and Lil was there as well. So we got to hear a little bit about what's happening there. And there's like environmental issues, there's going to be blasting done there that could affect things. But the biggest thing of all I want to bring to your attention is that this, this is being built on a hill that's up like 65 feet. And if you look in the front on the left side, you're going to see two paths going up. You're seeing stairways that kind of almost go straight up, but it has like these little landing spots along the way. And then you also have this jagged zipper up and down thing that's supposed to be for people in wheelchairs and have mobility issues. So when we looked at this, this was like, this could not be less accessible from a user-friendly point of view, and it's a long, it's a long walk up to the front entrance of the unit. Now, when we, when we, as a town voted to support this, which we're highly in support of, we were, I don't think we were ever shown the site plan, so I don't think we were aware of this at all. But it's now being brought to our attention that this is the plan that's going forward. And this is a different plan than they had even defined previously by about a year or so. So there's reporting up until October showing that the previous site that was flat, leveled, where the football field is now, has been changed to this new level as well. So we reached out, and then, you know, if you ask Jerry Noel, it doesn't look accessible, not at all. If you ask the Commission on Disabilities, it looks accessible, not at all. It looks very unaccessible if you think of winter and storms and things like that. This is not an attractive picture. So, but this grass, but the plan is to, I mean, the timeline is really tight. It's March is when they're planning to start blasting, I guess. And they came to us just to let us know this was going on. And so we have a representative apparently on the, that represents the town, Judy Diamond.
Diamond.
Yeah. And we've written to her, and we haven't heard any back, we haven't heard anything back from her about what transpired and how this happened.
Well, who is their architect?
I may know that.
How about that?
DRA.
It would seem to me that they're, they would not get a design, they're getting funding for this.
And isn't there, isn't the state disagreeing with it? And why aren't they approving this?
Well, the state will only, you know, the, when it comes to disabilities, so I've learned, there's very minimal levels as far as like accessibility. So is it accessible? Yes, but notice the torturous path.
I wouldn't want to be pushing my mother up in the wheelchair there.
Notice the torturous path to get there.
Is there an architectural access board that would say no to this, unless they get a barrier?
I'm pointing out that this is like, this is...
Would you guys, do you want to look at it?
Yeah, and I have a few more here if somebody wants it. And I have color here, so I'm sorry to be late.
What is it that we should be...
So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, one, I'd like to hear from, oh, oh, yeah, here's some more of those, yeah. So what I'm suggesting is that, one is that, I'd like, you know, I'd like to hear from our representative what happened, because we haven't heard from her, right? We've invited her to speak to us, and we haven't heard anything back. And Lil wrote her, a member in the Commission on Disabilities wrote her. And then the second thing I'd say is that, you know, on occasion, we get letters from lawyers. We have a town lawyer. So if we have some concern, if we were to write a letter saying, you know, what's up with this plan, you know, can we have this reviewed? I don't think it has to be a, I don't think it has to be a, you know, we're, we're going after you, but I think it's like we're paying attention and we're a little bit concerned about what we're seeing. And again, there's more information to this. They'd be happy to come in here and tell you what's going on, but I'm giving you the highlights as we're running, and we have no time to kind of do this. So that's what I'm suggesting is that if we are at all concerned about this at all, however we want to review it, I think we should at least take some sort of letter action, some sort of maybe just a letter from a lawyer expressing some of our concerns. Even if it fits ADA compliant, you know, rules, it doesn't look very accessible or comfortable. This is a 50-year, this is a 50-year building, if not one. And we're talking 1,600 students and, you know, parents that come and teachers that come that may not have total mobility. This doesn't sound like a good idea, especially when they have a site on board, and that was their original site, and they decided to venture on it. So anyways, that's the highlights of what I learned. That's what Lil, maybe Lil would like to have a discussion, because she was there, too. No, she wasn't there to discuss. And Jerry couldn't be here tonight, but he's, you know, he's...
Yeah, I would want, I mean, I would, you're bringing it up in board member, of course.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
We're not, I mean, it's at a point in the meeting where, I know you're sitting here in attendance, but it's really something we should...
That's fine.
Not be having a full-blown discussion about, you're bringing it to our attention, and what, and so you're wanting to get more information in regard to the design of this or the proposed, the proposed, I guess...
Yeah, personally, I'd like to hear from our representative who represents us on the board, and, you know...
She's also on the building, maybe.
And she's on the building, okay. So, like, how did this happen? How did it come down?
Last year or year?
I don't know her, so I don't know.
But the town also voted to support this, whole, wholeheartedly.
Yeah, no, we were very supportive.
And not only that, but did a ballot vote, so what, I mean, I would think, what are, what can we do, because the town already said yes to this whole entire...
Well, we, I don't think we voted on the site.
We don't get to. We gave, we said, yes, we're going to give you that...
The money, the money to go...
We're going to give you money to build.
Don't meet the needs.
Huge amount of money. The town overwhelmingly voted to say, yes, we're going to give you that to build your school. And it's out of, there wasn't any even any, there wasn't any discussion about this, other than when we met with them.
So, so what I'm bringing to your attention is now this has become an issue, and we can decide to ignore it or do something about it.
Well, I mean, I would wonder what, what could we do about it?
Again, what I'm suggesting is, you know, is that we get them in here to, you know, ask Judy to come in and, you know, tell us what's going on, have that group, that grassroots group come in, give you a review of the slides, and potentially have our, you know, if we have no interaction, have our town lawyer write up a summary note about our concerns, and try to slow it down or to actually have it be reviewed for the site. Apparently, there's been some precedence in the past that even if the, is it SSBC? SSBC? They have, when there's been, when there's been some concerns addressed, they actually will potentially reconsider the site plans.
MSBA.
But again, it's very...
MSBA, I'm sorry.
SSBC.
M, M, M. MBCBS.
Yeah.
What letter is it?
That's interesting, secondary.
Thank you.
MSBA.
Thank you.
So I'm bringing, just bringing to the board's attention, just want you to hear what, that's all.
Okay. I guess what our next step would be, maybe have a letter from the T town administrator to invite Mrs. Diamond here?
I think that makes sense.
Perhaps the...
Yeah, we can invite Judy and just address it through Superintendent DeBarry.
Sure.
Dave DeBarry.
I was just going to say, he's the one that came to present this to us.
Just say, we'd like some sort of an explanation as to, you know, the issue and what the resolution appears to be, you know, is it moved forward and why, or we're looking at it. But I think just the inquiry will alert them to our interest. So, you know, through the, through the administrator's office, we can reach out to Superintendent DeBarry to contact Mrs. Diamond, and I'll contact her informally. I think I'm Lee's on anyway. Oh, okay. To the vocational school. Am I, or am I?
I believe you are, yes.
Yeah. So I'll reach out to Mrs. Diamond and alert her that there's some interest in the issue and if they could just report back to us in fashion of form. We have an interest. How's that?
I can send you the slides.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I'd like to see them, too, if you have them.
Yeah, I'd be happy to send them around. Is that okay, Michael?
Send them to me and I'll send them out. That way we don't have...
Yeah, I mean, I've already sent them to...
Is it the same ones that were, she told me what happened with the, I didn't realize what they were first.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what this is about.
But I'll, we'll circulate them.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I have them hardtoped.
Was there an article that I read somewhere about this, though?
Yeah, Boston Globe.
Boston Globe, yeah. That was a while ago. How long ago?
Just November 27th.
Okay. So, but if we're really going to take some action other than calling Mrs. Diamond, then we would probably put it on the agenda for an agenda item to discuss it further, but we could certainly follow through and at least have her in to explain. I imagine it's like our high school where there's a path, a driving pathway out where there'd be the ability to park closer to the entranceway and access the entranceway, especially if there's a diversity initiative trying to encourage diverse candidates to attend this school.
Yeah. My understanding is major parking is at the lower level, you gotta walk up to go to it. That's what I'm understanding.
Well, we'll get, maybe get some clarification on that, and maybe the slides, too.
Yeah, yeah, slides do a good job.
And if we are looking at the slides, they should probably, they're going to become a part of our minutes, so they should be accessible to the other people to take a look at. Did you create the slideshow, or was that...
No, no, this group, this grassroots group came to us and, you know, put this all together. You know, they're doing the best they can, but they don't have much...
Okay.
They were surprised to learn about the site change. They weren't aware. So they're trying to tell all the towns this is an issue and we should be aware of it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallner. Mrs. Gonzalez?
The Veterans Events Committee met this week, went over Veterans Day and the dinner and just how well everything went. Also, we are going to go forward trying to accommodate disabled veteran parking, which this town doesn't have and many towns around us do. So we're going to start to pursue that in our town buildings, town hall, library, the senior housing, Walmart, Stop &amp; Shop. So we'll be working on that to get that implemented. And also, if you... All humor me. I shared a post today on my page and on the Community Connection from a post that I read that is just a feel-good story. And I'm just going to share the post with you from Eric Gerard. There's a new billboard at the lobster club. If anybody has seen it, and it's boots, they're called Brunt. Our very first billboard is now up in Brunt's hometown of North Reading, Mass. After outgrowing the garage at my old house, we took the contractor bay in this town where it became our warehouse, fulfillment operation, and eventually our office. As we grew from three to 10 employees, we made it work even in the dead of summer with no AC and the garage door open, but had to find something else while continuing to expand beyond that. We kept the contractor bay and found a building up the street that was built in the 80s by a construction company that had outgrown it. We're proud to now have a proper workplace for all 35 employees with more than one bathroom and even AC during those sweltering summer months. Our bay and our office are right next door to Bobcat of Boston, MB Tractor Equipment and Milton Cat, among many other small businesses that also serve hard-working, blue-collar Americans like we do. It feels like we've ended up exactly where we're supposed to be. While North Reading is a smaller town with only 15,000 residents, it's mostly made up of hard-working families, small business owners, and many small businesses, which is why we wanted to put up this billboard. We wanted to let them know Brunt is officially a part of the community, and we are doing our small part to build our business and create more jobs here. This town reminds me a lot of the hometown that I grew up in, a humble, hard-working place with good people. So we plan on this being Brunt's hometown for a while, if not forever. So I just thought that that was a great story, and then people were responding, and I found out that they just made a huge donation of boots to the Northeast Metro Tech. They gave boots to the electric and the HVAC units.
That is great.
So I just thought that that was a great feel-good story for our town, kind of an American dream story. So I wanted to share it, and it's got a great response on there, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to echo Mr. O'Leary's comments about the football team and all their hard work and excitement and add to that. We also have a pretty huge arts culture. We had a marching band that went down there, and a lot of those, actually, a lot of the membership of the marching band was working around the clock from morning, noon, and night, and late into the nights on the production, but they were as dedicated to the cause of making that an exciting game as our own players on the field. So I want to also acknowledge their effort at that, at that game, which I understand was tremendous, not just as the players, but the band. So we also have an exciting arts community here. And I also, I'm going to, again, echo Mr. O'Leary for Mrs. Kane, Mr. Owens, and all of the mascers and what they did to put on really amazing play. And I understood from my mascot that they had, they were in a competition, which is their, their high school equivalent of the Tonys. It's called the Jimmies, I think it's called. And they had the, apparently reported, the judge had very few comments, all positive. And of course, the show steal, who stole the show was Dylan Mills. Dan, Brady was pretty good, too, but Dan Mills' son was just incredible. Broadway, Broadway quality performance, which we wouldn't expect anything less from Mrs. Kane. So fun show, and the kids had a blast, and anyway, onward and upward. We have a really active arts community, so that's extremely exciting. And also to wish everybody happy holidays, hope it's peaceful, safe, and good holidays for everybody. Is there anything else, Mrs. Gonzalez? No, no, you just...
I just forgot to say happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Happy Hanukkah. Yes.
Safe and happy holidays.
All right. Anything else? All right. Do we have a motion? Do it, Jaren.
I, Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Waller, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just give it a second so Mrs. McDowell can make sure we have signed all that we need to sign before you leave.